This conference will now be recorded.
So we'll call to order the monetary select board at 5:00 PM. Susan and I are here in Town Hall. Scott, we are missing again this week. And we're also joined by the Finance Committee. Hi, Lee Market. And our first item is continuing review of the budget. In particular, some fire department items that serve as financing options to Town Hall repairs and highway truck. But I think it's really all on the table.
He should be on his way.
Yes, we're going to have Sean Tryon, he's going to join us to discuss the fire. And I know that you all met last night. I didn't know. If you had any thoughts or...
Yeah, we zeroed out the budget. Yeah, zero money from last year.
No, we do have some thoughts, so Frank's going to do that. I mean, you know.
We're working on March 22, right?
Uh, no, I sent you one.
Yeah, what?
3/28.
Oh, I have...
So that's, I've got everything from yesterday? I've got a...
How much would that up?
$197. I'll take the less for him, yeah.
It's the right direction.
What's the process go up?
Say something.
Say it.
Yeah, we started meeting. I'm asking you. I'm trying to suggest that after we meet with Sean, we just do some high level, like what our goals are and like what we're trying to achieve. So whenever we get stuck, if you go back to that, like higher level con...
That was...
Because I would also like at this point in the process, I feel like we should actually be making... Like, I got a little frustrated in some of the previous meetings. I thought the conversations were really good and super important. But in the end, we left without ever finalizing anything. And that, that does lead to the feeling of never compinging. Well, and I think that'll tie back to what Frank will present and how the Finance Committee is thinking overall about the numbers and then making decisions based on the fact. Jim, do you have anything you want to add?
Oh, lay down to the blast.
No, I, I, no, you...
I didn't do it.
Yeah, wait, let me answer that, yeah. No, I mean, you want to...
No, okay, we should, well, let's hear from Sean, then we'll do it.
Right.
We can summarize.
Yeah, we can summarize what we think.
We can. Jim Hunt is here. Thanks for joining us, Jim. Are we here? You could be related to the tree contract, the tractor bid and the highway truck, possibly more. Before Sean shows up, you did email us, talking again about the, the one, it's a one.
It is.
The one pickup.
Single wheel as opposed to dual wheel.
Yeah.
Like the, you know, the look of it.
Yeah. So you did email us a couple of weeks ago, or a week or two ago. And we have discussed the truck earlier. But did you have anything else on that? Or does anyone have any questions for Jim?
Congrats on selling the thing.
Selling, yeah.
The tractor and the furnace.
Well, we did close the auction yesterday on the tractor.
Great. What did you buy for it?
$16.2.
Did we pay for it? No, what did we pay for? Eleven?
$16.2.
Is that amazing? Thanks, Tom.
Yeah, we'd be less than ten.
Those parts are very valuable right now.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and start.
Okay.
You know, the Finance Committee and the Select Board had a joint meeting. And we both voted, as a group, we voted, there was one less Select Board member, Scott wasn't there. So we would not recommend doing on the purchase. It came back to the Select Board, I put on the agenda. Select Board, I think, I don't know where they voted, but I guess because it's still under the warrant, that you guys agreed to it. I don't, I'm not being disrespectful with Jim. I don't agree with the purchase. The purchase, and there are several reasons why. In my opinion, has low mileage. A lot of the mileage is for commuter miles, from what I know. I may be wrong, Jim. You go back to force them back, which is part of his contract, totally comfortable with that. Two, it's five years old. In the late fall, early winter meeting, you know, went to the GNC beer, it was good. We have a lot of pressure. We, you go through what we've done for the Department of Works. If you look at some of the raises for the Department of Works, salary increases are, some of them is higher, it's 20%. I don't have the number in front of me. I think that, you know, we've invested in, I think consciously, we've made a decision to invest in people, you know, this year. We know there's a price for turnover on labor. We know it's competitive. And I still think, you know, where we are, based on the financial meeting last night, we are still, there's still a gap to close. Based on the usage spreadsheet that Jim sent out earlier in the week, if a truck was to have a problem, he still has several options for plowing. They may not be the optimal options for plowing, but he still has other vehicles he can plow with. Personally, you know, and I told Jim this before, I just don't believe, okay, you've got, replace a truck because it's five years old. I know that at the one Select Board meeting, it had been two weeks ago because I was away last week, there was a suggestion by Select Board, no, we need to get the townspeople used to, you know, we're going to have a lot of the capital investments next year. Let's go ahead and make this investment this year. I, I think that's putting the cart forward on the horse. I think that we need to say, look, we've invested heavily in people here. It shows that, you know, you go through some of these percentages that we put on the spreadsheet. And if we can delay capital costs, then we should delay capital costs. So that's, that's my view of the...
Well, I think as, there is some, there is, I have a thought that we've spoken a lot about it and everything is kind of out on the table on a certain point. I know the Finance Committee actually voted on the truck. The Select Board actually hasn't officially changed our opinion.
Okay, I took it basically as still under, under warrant that it was. Because, you know, from the process thing is, it really falls down to, we can appeal to you, but we don't have a burden.
Well, I think if the majority of either board wants it on the warrant, let's put it on, but we can just say whether or not, if the Select Board approves it and the Finance Committee disapproves it, or doesn't approve it, doesn't support it, we'll put that on the warrant and then that's that. Unless, I, I mean, I think for the most part, we've really been through all the facts, you know.
But, just to reiterate, my, my biggest concern is that the 2016 FI-50 that's on the Capital Four next cycle, we're 17.5 in it right now for this year for repairs. Just came back a couple of days ago from the dealer. That's my biggest concern is that we, we, we'll have to get at least two more winters out of that. As it stands now, I'm not confident it's going to survive one more. It's let us down a lot, spent a lot of time broke down this year. So it's been good that we've had other options to use, you know? And we, we've been utilizing them. And then that leaves us without other options because option B isn't played.
Question, Jim, you have one on order now, right?
We have one on order to replace.
It's not an FI-50 because we couldn't...
Similar size vehicle, different brand.
And do we have a...
That's to replace the 2014.
Yeah.
Which was last year, that's kind of water over the...
But on, before, on the list that I have, you had a 2015, this is going back to the fall, a 2015, a 2016 and a 2020 FI-50.
That, what you have is a 2015, it's probably a, a, a mistake of some sort because it's a 2014 model year.
Okay.
Maybe we got it 15 and...
Probably.
It could be when it goes into service, you know.
Yeah, some documents do call that a 15 and some of the other ones call that 16 or 15.
Yeah, I, I figured it for time, though, I just didn't know which way, when. So, but that 2014, the new one will replace this one?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's due in a couple of months.
Jim, the repairs to the 2016 that have been ongoing, are they repairs that will, obviously, they're making the vehicle function. But sometimes there's a repair, like, you know, if you replace an engine, it costs a lot, but you can expect that new engine to carry you quite some time. What, were they the sort of repairs that is, are likely to extend the life of the truck? Or just to get by?
Fortunately, but unfortunately, they're, they were repairs to keep it running. Mostly electronics. Transmission control module was most recent. Traction control module, ABS module, various pieces of wiring harnesses. It's the salt environment that operates in that, that's really playing trouble with, with the electronics.
Have you, has that been a consistent problem with the, all the platforms? Or is it just that one truck?
It was to a little bit of a degree with that 2014. But, but not anywhere near as bad as this one is.
So, kind of lemony?
No, I don't know, it's just one of those, it's just one of those weird things that happen sometimes. Some hold up a little better than others.
What is the expected arrival of the, when it's on order? Do we have any news on that?
Within a couple of months. It's, it's being assembled now.
What, what manufacturer did you go with?
It's an international CV. And HP Fairfield is doing the outfitting. We, we have a lot of relation. So that's just my concern is if we put that 16 off, if we put the pickup off, that goes on again next year with the 2016, which we, we expect that'll be over 200,000 next year, just to, to replace that FI-50.
The...
Sean Tryon.
So I just wanted to say that we've busted our homes, all of us here, and over the years with different people, it's highway directors, to get the department where it needs to be now. And these manufacturers are just building junk right now. And all this equipment within the fire station, the highway garage, that's for the townspeople. That's to open these roads up. When I was over there, we were down at one storm with two trucks because every other truck was broke down. So you need to keep a consistent replacement policy of this apparatus because all of a sudden, it sneaks up on you and you have one or two pieces. And the townspeople aren't being served. And they're not going to accept having to stay home because you don't have the equipment to open up the roads for them. So I highly advise to keep with the capital plan as it's been put forward by the professionals and not try to cheap out because all it does in the long run, it drives the town into a hole.
I don't think it's fair to say cheap out. I think it's important to remember, I think it's important to remember that we're just trying to balance a lot of different aspects of funding, the demands of the town. So I just think it's important to not think that, that we're just being money blubbering.
Cheap might be the wrong word.
Okay. Because nothing's cheap, that's what I've seen so far.
But next year, on Town Wilson today, there was a quick little study down in New York State on fire trucks. Fire truck, every day that you don't sign your name to that contract, it's $735 a day that it costs you more.
So they have us over a barrel?
You got that right.
And we're just going to roll with it?
So, on that same note, on, on the pickup truck, one of the things that we really haven't considered is that we'll, we'll auction that truck off. And in today's market, we think that that will bring close to $30,000. So, you know, the actual cost is probably closer to 40 for the new truck. See, next year, that's probably going to be, going to be, you know, our retail closer to 80 and the trip, and the auction value of the current truck, the 2018, is going to be much less. Just, that, they're just going to get further apart. So the actual out of pocket is probably more attractive than you think. Or than, you know, we just haven't discussed that part of it.
Just out of curiosity, what is considered the use, the truck we're talking about replacing, not the FI-50? What is considered to be the useful life of it in terms of mileage? And what would be your expected delivery of a new truck?
That, we, we would turn around relatively quickly. And I actually would expect delivery of that sometime late fall, early winter of this, this calendar year. Expectancy in our environment is much different than expectancy in...
Because you're plowing, heavily using it, I get it.
If you were to move hay bales to horses with it, you know, it's an entirely different environment. We see what the 2016 is going through. You know, as I said, we're, we're $17,000 even now right now. And, and I don't see that getting any better for this pickup. The running boards are already falling off at one of them. We caught one of the stalls like two weeks ago.
And can you clarify, is this being used as just a commuter vehicle?
As I put in, I sent you all a breakdown on what the usages are. It's, it's really not. This is, you know, something that we use every time we gotta go for parts. It's something that, I monitor the road conditions with every day. You can see me going by your house at least once a week and try to hit every road. Project management, I mean, we have no big project going on, we're back and forth with, with that. And it, and it does have the ability to plow snow. We do use it to plow snow. It primarily works like gravel roads and in some of the parking lots.
Any further questions for Jim?
You mentioned a couple of things other than the truck, Jim.
Well, Jim, I don't know, were you here also to talk tree contract or other items? Or just the truck?
Really, the only other answer I really was looking for was the tractor. The, we closed the bids on the used tractor that we have to liquidate because we can't use it anymore. And those bids closed yesterday at about 11:00 in the morning. At $16,200, a gentleman from my screen is anxious to come pick it up. So we need for you to, for Select Board to, to accept that as a, as a high bid.
I'm to accept the bid, I'm against a bid from the tractor.
Second, is there any other discussion?
I will let him know and we will pay with it.
Okay, well, we will vote.
Yes.
Yes, that's two votes in favor of accepting the bid. And that's item 4B. We talked a little bit on the agenda, that's item 4B.
May I interject something?
Yes, Michelle.
Um, just to, correct me if I'm wrong.
Oh, I will.
Last night, in our discussions, we touched on the fact that last year, we had a tax rate, effective tax rate, what?
I think we should say, let's do...
No, 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 I, I want to finish what I'm saying.
I understand.
And you haven't heard anything that I've said yet, so let me finish.
I heard it all.
All right, so I, I'm not lying when I'm saying that last night, we identified that the effective tax rate was 6.09 last, for the past year. And that the way the current budget, and that was reduced to 7.01 from seven, a potential point, correct me, Melissa, on the numbers, but it would have been 7.88 per thousand if we had not used the funds that we had. Because that was free cash to reduce the tax levy. So this year, in totaling up all of the things on this sheet, we identified that currently we're looking at a 7.21 tax rate per thousand. And if we reduced, if we were able to whittle away about $235,000 from the budget, either, you know, however we shenanigan it, reduce the operating, cut from departments, not borrow, not buy, we might come in close to where we ended up last year. Around 7.01, 7.21. That's what you're looking at, you know, that's what we're looking at. So we go through and we cut 3,000 from here and 3,000 from there. And, you know, we can get there. Or, you know, does everybody say, oh, well, you know, maybe... This is the, the test point where we decide, do we want to allow the funding to increase the tax rate? That's what it comes down to, in my mind. And go ahead.
What I was going to say, I knew exactly what you were going to say. I have the same point and several other points to make about that. So this is going to come down to, is it a tax increase or not? Because we need some heavy investments this year. So I think we should hear from Sean, honor his times, get all the information we want, and then start that conversation.
Yes. Yeah, but I wanted to give you the context.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, the context is going to become clearer and clearer. And I also just want to put out there what we're thinking about this, that just because we don't put it on the warrant, doesn't mean like this year, we can't go to a special town meeting if there's an emergency or a need or something changes that wasn't anticipated. And that, you know, the decisions made do not reflect that we don't support and we're not trying to do the best. They reflect a limited pool that, you know, we're going to, we're going to see whether to come down on. But let's hear Sean.
Before we get to Sean, I do want to get, are we all set? We're all set with information from Jim?
Yeah.
Thank you, Jim.
Oh, except I heard Derek.
I think you had one.
What?
One of your team?
Maybe Sean should go first.
Whatever, I don't know what the word is.
I think I need to...
We gotta get someone going.
Are you okay with us finishing with Jim before moving on to you, just so we come to closure? Yeah, I know. Just think about how long we're going to be, buddy.
My inspection's not going to be very happy. I'm supposed to be there for 5:30.
You what?
My inspection.
You can go ahead. You want to go?
I'm sure mine's going to be quite a long time, so, just seeing how things are functioning.
Your call.
Frank, no, no, let's get Jim. Let's, let's, let's deal with them.
Okay, so last night, we had a discussion about, we went through lines with a lot of our people.
Some people couldn't count.
So I have a question for you, Jim. And I brought this up in an email earlier in the year. So in 2022, for supplies, you had $36,000 budgeted. In 2022, you spent $15,916. You came back in '23 and you have $36,000 budgeted right now. And through the first seven months of the year, you have spent $10,558. That's the end of January through the financials. And now you're asking for $46,000 for next year. And we're wondering, could that be cut to help us save on some of our operational costs?
So to cover on your, if I'm, if it's okay, you know?
Pardon me?
If it's okay to cover on that.
Yeah, no.
So the first component of that was six months of me doing the job, working on somebody else's budget, so we're clear on that, right? Trying to rebuild a team and, you know, admittedly, not necessarily spending everything that, and doing all the work that needed to be done, okay? A month into that, six months, I'm asked to write a budget for something that I honestly have no idea about. Okay, so we use trends from previous years to, to set our budget for '23. Okay, and that's, because we got to shoot from the hip on something, on some things, right? And so that's where we are, getting into how much we've spent from what was appropriated for '23. I think we're closer to 58% this month, year to date.
If you have the month of February included.
We have to add that because we're talking about real numbers.
Today, he spent 52% of the budget.
Okay, so.
Okay, for 52%.
Of the DAW supplies.
And we're going into the end of our night.
And what's coming, what's coming out of the remainder of that is the maintenance on all the heavy equipment. That's starting out for, for our spring campaign, maintenance campaign. So as we get towards the end of that season, we have to replace all that inventory that's being used to, to maintain that equipment. So we'll be ready to go for any repairs we have during the summer.
So you essentially feel that that is a locked in place kind of number?
I anticipate that we will spend a fair amount of what we had budgeted for '23. Again, that puts us kind of back into, into a rhythm where we have been. How did we arrive at such a, such an increase?
47%.
I was going to say, I was going to even say 28%. The cost of petroleum products, we know, has increased 100% in a lot of cases, right? The petroleum products makes up about 25% of that overall budget. So we put a number on based on that, on increasing that, that quarter of what we use in petroleum products.
So Jim, because what you're saying is that fully staff, so being able to do all the maintenance and other tasks and everything you need to do, that's the full cost of the...
Correct.
Other than personnel services. That's why it's so much higher. That's the tricky thing.
Than what was actually spent on 2023.
In pre, in prior years.
Well, that, that's why 22, yes.
Okay, I'm just...
I, I can attest for years prior to that, we don't use those as numbers to gauge where we're headed.
And my own, I know this is not an operating issue, but still. And we exhausted everything or have taken over everything we can. That's really capital, which is from the Saffron 95, right? For any other brands or anything else. That wouldn't apply to supplies. That's what I'm saying, right? There's no, there's no, I'm just trying to understand, there's no other accounts that apply to supplies? Because of that ice thing, that is another account, you know?
They needed his money spent on actual road building.
And, and that's a, right, because like rain and ice, there's snow and ice.
Well, that's the snow.
Yeah, but that's another number that adds in.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just going to hang for a little bit.
Okay.
All right.
Sean, truck, or, not truck, but vehicle, medical vehicle.
F vehicles, etc.
Would you like to come closer?
No, I don't like to come closer. Careful.
I want to bite.
There's room here, I'm fighting with it.
Sisters always say it's good to go.
So we have you down for $197 for the medical vehicle.
That is correct.
And that, just to make sure I have it right, that's actually not just one vehicle, right? That's several different things?
That is more correct.
Okay. Um, do we have a breakdown of that, just so everybody's talking about the same?
Yes, well, I do have a question, if I may ask. So we're talking about the med nine vehicle fire line in the special articles. Is that what you're here to present it out? And you're saying that the number that you're having is no longer 235, but 197? And that number is not just a med nine vehicle, it includes other items?
That is correct.
So what is the med nine vehicle, just straight, without other items? Or does that not exist?
So how about I start at the top and break it down?
Okay.
So initially, we were discussing going to a, going bigger and putting a pump on the truck, which is needed for the back roads and getting to access to all these houses that are being built since COVID in unreachable locations. So that priced out between $440,000 to $550,000 or so, depending on what cabin chassis we used. It is still, there's a lot of stories behind it, but we couldn't find what we wanted. We just, it didn't, wasn't working out. So we stepped back and we looked at it and decided to settle, where we have settled into is a Ford Expedition back to gas powered, so we don't have to deal with the diesel stuff. And we bust a brush truck on the side. So we were also looking to consolidate two trucks into one. It just was becoming a monro that we weren't sure if we were going to be able to make it work in the long haul there. We couldn't get what we wanted built. And we did find one manufacturer, but it had some odd ball parts and pieces on it. We just didn't want to trust it. At $500,000. And everybody thinks I spent a lot of money, but I find $500,000 for a small fire truck hanging on the disgusting side.
So in the end, the plan involves...
So in the end, the plan involves a Ford Expedition, taking the cabin chassis off of the current... So then the plan involves a Ford Expedition, taking the cabin chassis off of the current medical truck, sliding it under the body of the current brush truck that we have. It's got a multiple cats here, and we get a gas-powered truck. We still have our diesel-powered brush truck, which we still need. We'll make that work mostly for, mostly for reaching these locations of, the houses, they're out of the way.
Those are fire calls, those are no medical calls.
That is correct. Well, the medical truck would be medical calls, and then the brush truck then. Cause we need smaller vehicles to get up. Roads aren't plowed, driveways aren't plowed. We need to be able to access some of these places with smaller trucks that are four-wheel-driving, less weight.
So can we register tax?
Can you tell where my raise? Yeah, I'm very confused. I thought we were gonna have an offset. If people are building, not up to our code, and not what we can serve them with, I really, I really want to understand why the town has to spend half a million dollars to get to these. But I understand we want them to be safe, but can we take any things to change the zoning law, increase their taxes? If there's a new truck needed, make a, an assessment to them about, especially a truck needs to be bought for this? Because if this wasn't the case, and if we didn't have these new places, we wouldn't be looking at this expense, is that correct?
But we, we have explored it, and I think at the end of the day, we're actually not. The, the SUV option is actually a much more affordable option for a medical vehicle than, um.
In general, you think.
Yeah, than having a five fifty.
Right, but, but I, I still think this wouldn't, you know, we should still look at what, I mean, I'm not.
We have, the SLC board has.
An off, an offset.
Just like we're has looked, looked into it and, and legally. I mean, the one thing that we've been told that we can do is just refuse to serve people, which we're not in favor. We're not favored doing, and short of that, there's not.
We don't have any laws.
Too many options.
The size of the driveway, about the, I mean, I don't know if this will make you feel better, but I did actually draft and the select board approved a letter going through people on private ways that's actually gonna be printed in the Monterey News that talks about the fact that if your driveway or the road to your house are not kept to a reasonable standard, it will decrease the response time, which may result in loss of life or loss of property. But it's up to the homeowner to maintain the road in a way that allows access for the internet. Well, my understanding is that every homeowner has to be sure. And most insurance policies say that if there is not plowed to a certain standard, that they will not pay. So that is a lack of progress.
Well, what, what, what we're dealing with right now is, I think, a bit more immediate, or in front of a, like, expedition that's gas. Cost on that to buy an outfit?
About eighty-nine thousand dollars.
Well, I was gonna ask, okay, so you're, you're taking two trucks and making a new truck. Is that correct? You're taking the cab off of one and putting it on the other?
So we're, yes.
Okay, who's gonna do that work? Did you contract it out, or?
Not yet, no. Cause it's depending on how things play out here, is to maybe, who helps do the work?
What is the rescue nine cab, again, I mean, still have all the same problems it has right now, and it had to be towed a few months ago, right?
Yes. But it's many steps of po, above and beyond what the cabin chassis that we have under the body.
Which was a plowed truck. It plowed snow on a Thursday, went to a brush fire the following Wednesday.
That truck, I, the last time I was in here, I was looking at the hours in, the hours totaled by the sixty-five miles an hour that we usually calculate them up to, was just under a half million miles on that cabin chassis.
On the current brush truck?
The current brush truck, yes.
So rescue now would be an improvement?
Ah, great improvement. It has the new filter on it, it has all the new updates. Are we gonna have issues in it, with it in the future? I guarantee you, yes, we will, because it's a Ford diesel truck, so, um, that's, I think, just part of having that type of a vehicle.
What's the estimated cost of that conversion, I'll call it?
I put in forty just to, just to cover, I said whoever ends up converting that over at the time that it's, the money's good to go, so.
And the remaining portion of the one ninety-seven is for the jaws of life?
So, yes, I put in there, um, electric, um, jaws, hydraulic rescue equipment, cutting equipment.
Do I have some now?
We do.
And they're, they're broken?
They're not, but with this consolidation, we need to, to create more, two things. One, they're ten-plus years old at this time. And with getting rid of the vehicle that we have now is going to create more room issues as far as storage capacity. So with going to a battery set of jaws, will gain us a fair amount of space to be able to put the rest of the stuff on there that we need. And it would get us up with, in the times of new cutters and.
Would you be offloading the old ones, or?
Yeah, so they would probably put them on the minutes a bit, and I don't know what.
You know when you get the bid.
Yes, the minutes a bit does pretty well, so.
And what's the cost on the jaws of life part?
Uh, fifty-two, and that's a, right, it's a good number.
So my, I, I never understand where old equipment goes to die. It's good enough that somebody else wants it and will pay for it, but it's not good enough for us.
So it goes to people that want to expand on what they have for equipment? Depends on what it is. I'll use the jaws as a perfect example. People are buying more trucks. I mean, there's more traffic, there's more traffic accidents, so they're buying bigger trucks and they're putting more cutting tools and jaws on those vehicles, multiple sets for what they're doing, so. They're, they make for good backup. Actually, Barbara just got rid of a bunch of, I thought it was junk jaws on the minutes a bit, and they went somewhere to serve somebody, so. Some goes to export, where they don't have a lot of, you know, the restrictions that we have. You know, NFPA says we have to do things a certain way. Some communities really unfortunately have to ignore NFPA in some really rural towns out west, way in the deep south. Huge improvement for them, because they have nothing. So actually, our last set that we got, well, or so a year ago, went to North County, to a town that did not have a set, and surprisingly, they've been, they've been cutting people out of cars. All of a sudden, they start getting car accidents, they're using them now, so. And they're making them work, and they're ready to buy a new set now, so.
In the initial number that, that was the placeholder here, the two thirty-five, that was not really, that didn't include the jaws of life. That just was your estimated cost of getting one truck, is that?
So it was kind of like a ping pong ball here with numbers. We were up to five fifty, we were down to four fifty, we were at three twenty-five. We worked with a few different fire truck salesmen to try to build what we wanted and needed, and they just couldn't. Engineering couldn't make it happen. They used to build them, but due to some changes in trucks, they can't build them anymore. And with COVID, they're so busy that they have no interest in, in not changing their design on, on these trucks. We don't want to buy a half million dollar truck that's not gonna serve us well. That's our, our goal is to have apparatus that works for us. Or else it would be a waste of money.
Between the Ford Expedition, the transferring the brush under rescue nine, and the jaws of life are up to one eighty-one?
Yep, so, uh, it became very evident a few weeks ago that we need pagers. All our pagers are breaking, old. The second, the model that most of the firefighters have is a couple versions old, and they're not supporting the repairs of them. So it's, it's time to upgrade those, because Justin doesn't have a pager. My pager, the knobs are falling off, Justin's father's knobs are not, they're gone. So they're about five hundred fifty dollars apiece. So, and I figure we need about a dozen of them.
So that's about six K.
That's, yeah, I think that works out to six.
What's the useful life of a pager?
Better than who has it.
For me, it'd be like a week, okay?
So myself, and the guys that put in a lot of work, the, um, the trades guys, couple of years, really. Somebody that sits behind a desk, ten-plus years probably, unless it gets dry.
Been ten years.
Yeah.
Wow.
So that's sixty-seven hundred dollars, so then we, but you, the difference is eighteen thousand from one eighty-one to one ninety-seven. So we're still looking at eleven thousand, three hundred dollars.
So I got ten thousand dollars in there.
You made a math error.
I probably did.
I what?
You made a math error.
I made a math error.
One is one ninety-one.
One eighty-one.
It's one ninety-one.
Oh, you said that was one ninety-one.
Yeah, plus another six, it brings it to one ninety-seven.
Oh, okay. I'm so happy it's a math.
No, it is.
You said one eighty-one.
And I'm pretty confident with that number.
Well, I was too.
Fifty-two, forty, and eighty-nine, right? Were those a thing?
Sean, you're gonna fill in the V eight on the Expedition?
Thirteen and five, it's one eighty-one.
Turbos.
You should read up on those turbos for a lot of problems.
Are they?
Yeah. I read a.
Yes.
It's a dual turbo.
Yep.
And what I read is stay away from them.
Correct.
Am I right? Am I right?
What?
We know math.
I read, there's an article online about that, but. I was going with one article, could be wrong, but.
Well, check it out, there's all sorts of issues.
One, wait, one, wait. Oh.
Yes. That's sidetracked here.
My bad.
So, um, the monitor, which is the nozzle on one seven-two, which is the ladder, that, we've been having a bunch of electrical issues with it, if it's an off-brand model. The minimum repair on it's a thousand dollars of whack. We're on number four or five now on the damn thing, so. Ten K will buy us a top-notch nozzle for no control, so we don't have to worry about wiring and breaking switches and stupid donors. So that should total up close to that one ninety-seven, I won't guarantee it.
I have you down at one ninety-seven six, I think.
We just changed it for a V eight, so.
So, in, in, one of the things that was about one I did, I wondered about is, so is the big truck we have kind of, like, gonna become less useful if we're having to service different types of venues? I mean.
Which?
Well, I mean, if you can't take the big one up into a lot of these places, so then the next time when we replace it, are we gonna be looking at getting a smaller version of it?
No, 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 because we can get, those two big trucks that we have up there, I'll say we'll get to about ninety-eight percent, ninety-five, ninety-eight percent of. But there's other factors in it, snowstorms, ice storms, mud season, mud season. You don't want to take that million-dollar truck up that road and slide off into a tree, and then it's out of service and it's gonna cost you a hundred thousand to fix it.
Well, that's what I meant, is like that, that kind of vehicle kind of becoming redundant or not?
No, no, because we still need that, we need space to hold all, have a ton of tools, and they're coming, things are changing faster than, keep up with them, so, uh, no. Ultimately, we're gonna grow, ultimately, we're growing, we need to grow a little bit with all the stuff we need to have, so.
So as far as the, uh, gas expedition and replacing the cabin chassis, that kind of is a much lower cost than we were anticipating, uh, purchasing a combination vehicle. The one thing that I noticed in the operating budget is that equip, uh, equipment and maintenance is up to sixty-six thousand from thirty thousand?
Yep.
And we had put in thirty-five at special time meeting. Is there any wiggle room in there to cover, like, the pagers and the nozzle out of that sixty-six?
So here's where we can go down the rabbit hole. So there's some stuff on the tanker one seven-seven that we'll call, we, we could leave it as deferred maintenance if we had a new truck on the schedule to replace next year's, um, that town meeting.
Is the tanker the one that's on the?
Okay, yes. So there's some rock underneath of it. Originally, they had priced it out at fifteen thousand dollars to fix the rock, paint everything up, de-rust it. That's now up in the twenty-twenty-five range, which reflects into that budget. So it's catch twenty-two. We can guarantee we're replacing stuff in the next couple of years here. We can let some stuff go, but if we don't, then it's gonna catch up to us and, and then we're gonna be taking the body off the truck, replacing the whole subframe. We're gonna get into a hundred thousand dollar truck, so, um, so we can save, yeah, probably about twenty thousand dollars by not doing that, but we are looking to our own.
Pay now, pay later.
Paying out, pay later.
Prove now, prove later.
Melissa, do you think for the pagers and the monitor nozzle, the accountant is gonna want us to put them in the line item? Or is it special article?
Yeah, they're one-time purchases, so I think they'll be, um, special article.
Special articles, and I'll separate them out. I just, I was just putting it as one for now, for.
Even like, even pagers that are some routine, like six thousand, it's gonna be a special article?
That's up to you guys. If you add it in, it kind of looks like you're raising the budget for next year.
Yeah.
Well, we're raising the budget for next year.
I think it's, not much. Since it's a one-time purchase, you do a special article. I mean, it's.
I think it's important for people to see and choose whatever, that they know exactly what they're paying for instead of blocking it.
I think it's also tricky when things aren't a yearly.
Yeah, I like that.
If you're getting something every six years, it's strange that, I mean, how do you put that in a regular lineup? Although I suppose some supplies you don't replace all the time, right? But.
You might.
I, I tend to think of supplies as a sort of thing, you're doing orders on a regular basis throughout the year. It might be quarterly, but it's not every other year.
Maybe it is.
So the, the way that we're looking at now, it's five different special articles for a total of one ninety-seven six?
I thought you had more, than one?
I thought it was.
It's five.
Oh, that's good.
It's five.
I think you, I think you could do the expedition and the brush truck conversion as one.
Yeah.
I think so.
We'll count, we'll call it like, you know.
Might be a little complicated, it's like twenty on the floor up there, but I would keep them separate.
It'd be nice to have a, I don't know who you go to, give an estimate, you know, somebody.
And picture.
I'm not discrediting him, but we have one proposal, and this is the part.
Who's done it before? Did, did you all do it?
No, but I do, I do think we're looking at ways, so at town meeting, like, we could really show what it is, so it's not like all just people talking about it, like, what's the.
I can get a quote for. I can get a quote from a. Commercial company.
I mean, and it's fair to say, this is the commercial quote we got. This is what we estimated cost to have um town, you know, the fire department and D P W work on it. We're clearly looking for the best.
It's not that we don't want to, but there's, again, N F P A requires certain things and none of us are certified fire.
I don't, I don't. I had a pressure on me to do that.
No, it's just we're not certified fire apparatus repair technician.
I agree.
No, but just, I mean, just an idea of what each item is and why it's needed. It's a pain to get the estimate, but it may make our lives a little better at town meeting.
I'll see what I can get. He's not very happy with it.
Hey, you've got the money, so he's got to be.
Being purchased, everybody used to be.
Call Amazon.
By drum.
So can I just uh recap that? So my sense is that the vehicles and whatever work needs to be done on them should be one. Article, the jaws of life should be one article, and then the additional supplies, pagers, nozzle, and I don't know what the third.
Is the electric ball.
Well, would be the the third item.
And the truck. The two vehicles together, the jaws, the legs, and then the combination, the pagers.
I don't know why you combined. I mean, I think if you're gonna combine them, just put them in the equipment. It is, I think it'll probably be two separate, that's minutia.
Who what?
No, I don't think it's minutia. I think it's important for people to know in this case what we're buying.
Oh, it's gonna say on the warrant what we're buying, yeah.
Well, that was just my perspective, so I have not waited to.
So when that's written off, don't say jaws of life. That's proprietary.
What are you supposed to say?
Dramatic air or something.
Hydraulic rescue.
Hydraulic weapon.
Hydraulics.
Hydraulic rescue.
Yeah, we need, we need a hydraulic.
We also need to figure out wording for Ford Expedition in case. We get.
Not afford.
Not afford.
True, yes.
Ford or.
You consider a Ford S E or?
Reason you want with the Ford?
Take life.
Sorry. Is there a particular reason why you want with the Ford? Uh M H Q and the state contract, it saves steps for starting fitting out.
Can we call it a medical S U V?
Yeah. I was, lost that.
I mean, that's. It pretty much describes what you're purchasing without committing to a particular object.
No, it's not a bad thing.
Okay. Any other questions for Sean?
You're not very late.
We don't have any other questions?
Half hour.
Sean, so um that takes care of everything, so like, you know, we have the payments you we make, we have everything we did in the last town meeting. We have all these needs, we put some more money into the staffing, so like, you know, just like in Jim's department, that brings you up to kind of a level that you. You know, have been looking to go to.
Some other stuff and all.
Well, that's what I'm asking. I just.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
No, I'm happy with that.
But those are two big steps up, and I think we should, you know, take a lot of credit in kind of getting you there and making sure they understand what it is.
And if we can whittle away of something in between now and town meeting, I'm not opposed to dropping. Get a little bit off here or there. I'm not, I'm not looking to.
No. But what we do wanna do after town meeting, the next year, is just really help you create some kind of tracking sheet, maintenance sheet, so we can look at it, we have the numbers, we're not always asking you the questions. And like, you know, Jim said, like, he got thrown, you know, three weeks in the job or whatever it was into the defendant pool, to really create some budget tools and tracking that will help you and not be um. Harder on you, but will kind of free it up for you, so you know what you, you know, you have less questions. Will you? I just wanna thank you for all the work you did.
Yeah, that was a lot.
Pretty clear that you had to go back again and again and again to come up with a workable plan, and I I have some sense of the work involved in that sort of thing, and I really. Appreciate the fact that someone who's volunteering for this position had to put in that amount of work to come up with a plan that. You know.
Thank you.
Might be workable and it's appreciated.
And it was, it was an awful process because I'd rather build a big fire truck any day of the week. Much easier. You're trying to stuff so much into a little vehicle.
I know.
Appreciate it.
It's, and and so are you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. That's one of the ways you show it, I'm funding the budget.
Yes, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
The treasurer is on, talking about the finances. Hi, Sarah, thank you for joining us.
Hi, thank you for having me. Can you hear me okay?
Yes. We can hear you. Um, so we have looked at with David a couple times. Whether to do, whether to do a permit financing or a five-year financing this year or next year, and then how large of a paydown. We should make uh if we do a one-year note again this year. And I think.
Yes, that would be the first two, yep.
The consensus of the board, the last time we discussed this, was it was. The models were difficult and it seemed like maybe inaccurate, and so we were leaning in the direction of making. The same principal payments as last year, and then also the interest, which, and doing a one-year note again.
Okay.
So we have that down. As uh fifty-six thousand eight hundred and fifteen for the tandem axle truck. Uh with fifty thousand being principal, and then a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for the library building project with a hundred thousand dollars being principal. And then as far as the fifty-one thousand seven hundred that we appropriated towards the tandem axle last year, we were. I think the plan at this point is to encumber it.
So there's only, what is it? Do you have that number up top or back? There is twenty-eight thousand left?
Yep, twenty-one thousand. Let me see, I have it here. Twenty thousand three seventy-three seventy-nine is what we would encumber. And then the year, there wasn't. We didn't use the full two hundred thousand dollars, so we will also be paying down twenty-nine thousand six twenty-six twenty-one, which nets out to fifty thousand. So that fifty thousand dollars that will be paid in November is not part of F Y twenty-four's budget.
Yeah, so if I'm not mistaken, when we thought we were putting the twenty-nine thousand dollars we didn't use. Against the tandem axle, what we actually took was twenty-nine thousand of the roughly fifty thousand we had approved at town meeting. We took twenty-nine of that and paid it down. By twenty-nine?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
That was for the truck.
I'm so confused.
For the tandem axle truck.
That's where, that's where the uh the stabilization fund.
Money is coming from.
Is that correct?
Is that, so Sarah, I'm sorry, I'm very new at this. So. The items that we have to pay are the tandem axle and the library loan, right?
Correct.
That's it. Everything else is.
Well, that's what, that's certainly at the moment.
At the moment, if we don't buy anything new.
Other than Sarah, could you speak to the a hundred and sixty thousand dollars that we authorized last year for a F five fifty or similar truck, and. Should we set aside some money for that this year?
So yes, the hundred and sixty thousand dollars is the new truck, which is my understanding, we're gonna be taking a loan out um in June, May or June. And we can do one or two options. We can, the first year, depending on the structure, and once you do the budget, if there's room in the budget. To pay a portion of that down in fiscal year twenty-four. We can do that. If you feel like the budget's too tight, we can put it into a band and roll it for a year with no down payment, it, I mean, no. Pay down, just an interest amount.
Like the interest amount we would need to pay?
Yes.
Yes, we have to pay the interest amount, but if we do a ban, we have three years before we have to do any sort of pay down. So again, depending on what your budget looks like, and you, if you feel like the um budget couldn't handle a pay down, then you can actually just pay the interest portion. And no principal for three years.
Do you know what the, so are we, are we due to pay principal this November, or due to pay interest this November?
Not um. So for the hundred and sixty thousand dollars, we didn't take the loan out yet, so we don't have the interest calculated until we um take it out. We can give you an estimate. At probably about four and a half percent is what we would do, but as soon as we take the loan out, we'll know once um a bank. Um bids on it, we'll have that exact dollar amount, and that wouldn't have to be paid until probably one year. We have a couple of different options that. Um David and I talked about. We might roll a six-month note if you guys think you're gonna do a pay down. We can roll a six-month note, which means we would pay it up, pay it and include it in November. And almost like do a bundle of a one group. Um or we can break it out and have it be its own separate loan and do it for one full year.
If we were to do the six-month note, how much would we, how much would the town be responsible for in November? I mean, it would probably depend on how much principal we wanna pay?
Exactly. If we wanted to make this all into one, we would still only be responsible for just the interest amount for six months. But if you choose to pay down some, then you can include it. It's called a multipurpose loan, and what the bank, I mean, I believe you guys may have seen it. If not, we can send you the one that. Is for the library and truck one, and the multipurpose loan breaks it out exactly how much each one of these loans per the pay down is. So if you choose not to put any down on truck two, you don't have to, and that breakout will be on that sheet every time we do a loan.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm going backwards. So on the tandem axle and the library loan, the amounts listed here for fifty-six and one thirty-five are tax plus. Plus a principal payment, right? I mean, interest plus a principal payment.
Correct.
And what, and and how does that break out?
It's more than the minimum?
Yeah. The minimum is seventy thousand nine fifty in principal and thirty-five thousand in interest for a total of one oh five nine fifty on the library. Wait, wait, wait. So how does the one thirty-five relate to the one five? Because the board decided to put more.
What's the one oh five nine fifty?
This is the.
Can you, can you break that out for me again? I'm sorry. Just go slower so we can read that. Yeah. Seventy thousand nine hundred and fifty in principal.
For the library?
And what's our term? It's a one-year note.
Okay.
Okay. Thirty-five thousand in interest for a total minimum payment of one oh five nine fifty.
Oh yeah, that's the number we wrote in yesterday.
The truck that we owe the payment on, the minimum payment is six thousand eight hundred and fourteen dollars and ninety-five cents interest only. And how long is that for? They're all one-year notes. We can only do one year if they're in the expense.
We could do a five-year financing this year.
And is there a benefit to going to five-year financing, Sarah?
It depends on the town. Some town, we don't know what the interest rate will be in a year from now, so sometimes, you know, you can go out year by year if you anticipate the rates will go down. Then that's when you would probably do a five-year um state house note, so it's, it's basically gambling on whether or not the interest rate will go down.
What's the interest rates now?
They're, I would say between four and five percent.
For one year or a five year? No, for what we're paying that sum.
So what's the principal word on the tandem axle?
Can I just ask a question?
Oh, you asked.
I did. For one year or a five year, the interest rate?
It depends on, again, I'll have to, I can get that from um David, so he can see what the trends are. Um like, for instance, right now, I took out a loan for another community, a smaller amount, uh but the interest was four point three five for a one-year note.
Okay, and but you don't have a sense of what the five years are running?
It usually is a little bit more, um because you're locking in, so it could be probably up to maybe five percent, but again, that would be something David would know more of the trends. Um and I can ask him what the trends have been.
Oh, oh.
He was estimating five.
And so I, can I ask my question? What is the principal on the tandem axle?
There's no principal due.
Okay, there's no principal due, and last night we discussed paying the interest plus. Some of that. Like twenty-five thousand, thirty thousand on, on it to reduce.
Yeah, that's the question. That's what I was gonna say. Well, it was a two hundred thousand dollar loan, and we've only paid the twenty-nine six twenty-six twenty-one, right, Sarah?
Three hundred.
Correct.
We have fifty that is going to be put against the. The city right now.
See, I'm not, I'm saying, where is the fifty coming from if there's only twenty thousand left in the account?
Because what they did, I, I think.
So there's.
So what they did, when we voted one seven at last town meeting. And there was, there was the fifty-one seven that we voted at town meeting, and there was the twenty-nine that we never took out, because it was a two hundred thousand dollar authorization. And and it only cost one seventy-one. What was meant to happen was to take that twenty-nine that we never used and apply it against the two hundred, because we never used the twenty-nine, apply it against the two hundred. But what really happened is they took twenty-nine from the fifty-one seven. And left the twenty-nine that we never used and left the remainder of the fifty-one seven. But that still means there's roughly fifty thousand dollars between the two.
That is going to the stabilization fund?
That is.
No.
No.
It's going to the payoff of these? Of the truck.
That is our fund.
So then it'll be down to one. So it doesn't have to come out of this budget because it's already authorized in last year.
It's already authorized, but my thought on it is we authorized it last year, it was intended to be paid, it didn't. We should just act as though this.
Yeah, it was gone.
This is, doesn't exist.
Yeah, I agree.
Which we should, we should have.
That makes sense, and then that changes us moving forward. We have to encumber that to accomplish one. Which we are handling on the two. Which we have, which could be done in the fiscal, which could be done in this fiscal year without approval.
It seems dumb.
Same, Sarah, they.
So, which could have, yeah, okay.
So I'm, now I'm really confused. Where's the fifty thousand from the stabilization fund? That's coming from two other old articles. Okay, okay. And Sarah, when do we have to actually make these decisions, but we have to, I mean, what's the timeline? Like, what's the turnaround? I know, but how much time do we need?
So for me, as the treasurer, I mean, it's basically when the budget is due. With the exception of the truck two, whether I not, I need to do a six-month loan or a one-year loan. Um but I think because we're gonna be taking the loan out in May or June, um I would imagine the budget, you guys would kind of come to a decision before that, so then I would be able to. Um let you know on the truck two, what the interest would be based off of um a one or, one-year or six-month loan.
I, I'm personally in favor of doing the six-month. Loan and just, and just allocating for the interest.
For which?
What?
For the truck to the hundred and sixty thousand dollar truck that's yet to be delivered.
And I would, I actually would recommend that as well. I mean, whatever's best for the town, but I would recommend doing the six-month and roll it in with the other one, so you'll have one multipurpose loan.
Yeah. Yeah.
So how much, how much is that? You said four and a half percent of a hundred and sixty, and that, I mean, as an estimate, but we need. Maybe shoot for, on the high end for the estimate, so maybe five percent? Would that make sense?
Yes, I would, I would always shoot a little bit higher, um because worst-case scenario, you can take those funds and put it towards principal if you choose, and it's just paying down the loan.
So just to restate the concept here, would we need, that we would take, it basically what I'll call a gap loan, a six-month loan to cover the truck. On which we pay only the interest to get to where these other loans roll over, so we could make a multipurpose loan that would include the new truck, the truck. Which we're expecting delivery on in the future.
In the year of the, yeah.
To incorporate with the existing loan on the tandem axle and library. Would that sum it up? Except for the base amounts that we're paying and what we're rolling over, yes. Is that correct? Is that correct, Justin? In this, with the six-month concept?
Is it, are we paying the minimum or?
Right. Except for base. I, I wanna talk about the payment. I just wanna make sure I understand the concept of the six-month loan. Except for the base amounts.
No, no.
For purposes of combining with the other loans when they come due in November. Is that the concept? For the six-month?
I'm not fully sure I'm understanding. Sarah, if we get, when we get the truck in June, will we, we won't owe any money, but then in November, we'll owe eight thousand and, roughly eight thousand in interest on the truck two?
Actually, yes, we won't owe anything in June. We'll own four thousand in interest, because it's only gonna be the six months, not the full year, but yes, you are right on, Justin.
Okay, so maybe, and but we won't owe anything additional in November, other than that for that first six months. We would be due the next November to pay that one-year note?
Yes, and actually, in, you have three years. Before you have to pay any principal by law, so if you choose not to on. So if you choose not to on that, I'm now I'm just talking about truck two. You have three years before you have to make a principal payment. So if the second year comes and you don't feel like you guys can make that payment, you don't by law have to. I wouldn't recommend it, but you don't have to. Does that make sense?
I mean, I would, I would be in favor at this point of putting four thousand dollars aside for the five percent of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for half a year that would be due in November. There's paying interest but no principal, but it would get it on track with all of our other one year notes or two other one year notes?
I would second that.
I've heard it.
If that makes sense with you, Sarah, and if everyone here is agreeable to it, that's.
But but that doesn't.
Perfect, no, that makes sense to me. I'll, I'll talk to David about um starting up that loan. Um the short term, six month loan for the truck that's coming in.
A new truck that we just approved, that was approving that, we, right.
Not the one that he's asking for right now.
And not what, and not for the what we're paying out of the library?
So, yeah, so to to touch on the other two things, I mean, Melissa read off the minimum payments.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
No, I'm, I'm sorry. I was thought, thinking we were trying to, yes, I'm sorry.
We, we, so we know the minimum payments. My inclination was to pay more on the principal in part because we're still down, even with these payments as it is, a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars to my share on debt service. And if we keep up our principal payments um before adding a lot more to our debt service, that way when we go to permanently finance, we've taken a bigger chunk out of the principal, which will in turn take interest out every single year.
Yeah, I agree. I just don't know, based on some of the decisions we have to make on the operating, how much of that money we'll have available. If we wanna make choices, because that will bug into what Michelle was saying about, you know, we don't have the same amount of cash to lower the town.
No, tax rate's going up.
Yeah, so, so I just wanna say, like, those are, that's the choice. That's one place we could take.
I'm, I'm just gonna also put it there. Well, I'll wait till that.
Yeah, yeah. No, I agree with you. In theory, it's just what we end up deciding at what level.
Um can I, can I interject for just one moment?
Yeah, Sarah.
So I just, one of the things I like to suggest and just keep in mind, the debt that's coming down the road, um I, I always recommend trying to keep your debt outside of the budget because you're always gonna have debt. Not that you want debt, but as projects come due or you need more trucks, it's easier to maintain and come up with a debt total budget number than pull from that to to fund the operating budget, because the operating budget, you don't wanna ever have to cut that um based off of a new debt that has to come on. So that's just my only recommendation. If you know that debt's gonna be coming down the line, you kinda wanna maintain whatever you've done in the past few years, the average debt that debt payout you do. Um instead of trying to reduce that for budgeting, only again, because you don't know what's gonna happen in a few years and you don't wanna be strapped if you're down a fire truck and you can't afford a new one because you you didn't pay these debts down. So that's just a recommendation. You don't have to do that, but just to keep in mind that if there's anything coming down the road that you guys can think of, you might need the budget money for.
And Sarah, most of uh small towns, but that money does come out of the operating budget. It has to be in that line. You're just saying, keep that line as old as possible, even though we were pretty aggressive in past years in paying back some of our principal.
Exactly, yes. It it's, it's just a, in other towns, it's easier to maintain a debt and you have to kind of project what's gonna fall off in a couple of years and maybe even time the purchases of bigger items, knowing that something's coming off. Um you just wanna kind of keep that in mind when you're capital projects, kind of go out five to ten years of what you anticipate you're gonna need um to try and maintain that in the budget. And again, I know it's operating budget, but just the debt portion of it.
So one thing, so if you add up the uh total cost of from last year from the remaining debt, it's one sixty-five, eight eighty-eight, and this year with just those two items.
What's one sixty-five?
If you add up what we paid on the tandem axle and the library last year.
I have it at one fifty.
No, I'm just saying, those two things.
I have it at like one fifty-six.
Oh, did I make a mistake in that?
Well, I don't know. I just added one oh four plus fifty-one is one fifty.
Right, so it's one fifty-five, okay. So we paid one fifty-five to service our debt on those two items, and this year we're looking at spending one ninety-one, eight, just so in line with what she's saying. Do we want to level fund it, the debt payment?
I'm trying to look at the year, the year before.
I think.
Twenty-three, what was, what budget she's on?
Well, well, Michelle, you're right.
We had a couple of permanent notes as well paid down.
Yeah, so Michelle, you're right. We did, we are up on the tandem axle and the library loan. I think just because rates are up. We made the same principal payment last year in the library. And I think the same principal payment on the tandem axle.
I'm looking for.
Um so it'd be the same principal payment. Rates are up, but since we got rid of the transfer station and the fire truck, its debt service as a whole is still way down.
Right.
That's what I was saying.
I'm just taking into consideration what she's saying as to how to balance, you know, oh, goodie, we're not paying as much this year, but actually, we might, we'll have to pay more next year.
Yeah, the, you know, the things sort of forecasted out, we're gonna be paying more.
Right, right. So we probably write that up to the three hundred, right? So where's historical? When did we pay before three hundred? That's what I'm trying to.
Well.
If the three, I'm trying to peg, is the three hundred a high year or or are we now a low year?
I think we're now.
I think we're in a low year this year from, from my recollection. We're in a low year.
We're on a low year. We're on a high year wages.
Right, that's what I was gonna say.
We're on a high wage, you know.
We've increased other, right, we had a, no, we, that's why, you know, I made that last.
So Justin, I wanted to make sure I understand. Okay, so you're saying we get the truck we get in June, we just pay interest up until six months or whatever it is. And then we consolidate these loans and then we're starting to pay the principal down?
I don't think they're really consolidated, but we take out, if, if I'm not mistaken, Sarah, we take out one note, but the.
Correct. It's called a multi, yeah, a multipurpose loan, they're, it's almost all separate, but they are all bought together.
Yeah, but the, the, those items all have different lives.
The library.
The library, the truck is gonna be different. The tandem axle is already started, so how do you, to me, it gets convoluted.
It doesn't, it doesn't, because the, I believe that the instrument, the long term instrument that we typically use, I believe David Eisenstahl reported that the maximum number of years available for that is five.
Yeah, the state house, is the maximum for a state house loan, Sarah, five years?
That's typically, I believe they might go out to ten, but typically we don't. It's, it would be a five year loan.
But how, but how do you know when the truck is paid off?
Well, right now, we have a principal.
So we have this, this format. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Well, you, you go ahead, Sarah.
So we, when we go to do a loan, actually, when you guys sign for the notes, um attached to the notes, there's this printout from um the bank. It's called a multi, multipurpose loan breakout and it breaks out exactly what the original loan amount was for each item within this total note, what principal amount you're paying down, what the interest portion is specifically to that amount, and then the ending balance when this closes out. So you will actually see the breakout um for each uh individual item in the total note.
Okay, so it's a line item. Behind the note is a line item saying, when you get up to the end of this loan, this is what it,
Yeah.
where, where you're at with each item.
I have concerns about the six months. Are all our loans at the same rate now?
Um yes, because they're all in the one, they're all together in one.
They're all consolidated.
It's only two items, the tandem axle.
Right, and they're both at four points, four points. And, and, and Sarah, I mean, I'm sure your office is digging into this, but I think all indications are the, 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 the Fed's gonna, the rates are gonna go up again. Especially after it's still kind of, well, a bank, I don't think we're looking at a lowering of a rate, right?
Uh, it's six months from now. I can't say. I know that they're gonna hire um the interest rate currently, but there has been talk that they don't wanna go much further because it's actually constricting the um the, the workings of everything. So there, I'm not actually convinced that it's gonna go up in six months. Obviously, I can't say because it's not, you know, I'm, I'm not convinced.
Well, if you went to five point seven, right. I'm just worried about that because in normal time, you know.
Good, Sarah, back to my original question. Just so I clarify. Get clarity. So we take the note out in, in the fall, and then when the loan is paid off, we will know where we stand on the principal on all those items.
Exactly, yes.
Okay, okay.
And I actually can forward you a prior one so you can get a, a better idea of what we're, we're looking at.
That would be good. So, right, so there's no now to be done on what needs to be paid off quicker since they're all at the same rate?
Correct.
So, I mean, what I would do is what the board had uh previously had, which was a hundred thousand plus thirty-five in interest for the library, which is a total of a hundred and thirty-five for the library. Uh fifty thousand principal plus six thousand eight hundred and fifteen interest for the tandem axle for a total of fifty-six thousand eight fifteen. And then for what we're calling truck two, the five fifty, we should set aside four thousand dollars and pay off the interest in November and then do the one year note starting in November.
Okay, I think we should reassess starting in November a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah, because you've gotta assess it.
Yeah, 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 thank you. That's always.
Um, I remember, I mean, I had written down that we were tied about for the library, seven, close to seventy-one K plus the thirty-five in interest?
That was the minimum.
That's the seventy-nine, thirty-nine, thirty is the principal.
That's the minimum. Seventy-nine fifty is the principal.
But now I'm, but now I'm concerned about what she said about keeping the debt service at a relatively steady state. But I think this year is different, what you're saying.
Well, I, I think it's different. Next year's is gonna be a different challenge.
Right.
Right, I agree. This, it was very low this year. If you look at the history, this year was extremely low. Um so if anything, you, I would recommend you actually put more down on either truck one or truck two to start paying that off, because you do have that compared to prior years. But again, that's your comp.
I never got a principal. I, I.
I agree too.
I have to pay some principal.
Thank you for your opinion.
So why, we could pay a quarter of truck two. We could do forty thousand in principal, four thousand in interest.
That's what I would do.
I'm, I'm good with that.
You know, I, I, I think you have to. I think you, two, is you make it difficult next year, even more difficult next year because you've selected it. You're, you're kicking the ball down.
That's what I'm saying. That's why.
It's like the federal government, we're not the federal government.
Right, no, that's why I'm saying, I'm now concerned by like, I thought that was a place we can come, but I'm not so sure anymore, Frank, right? That's, I agree.
So would that make any sense? And maybe that interest would be lower if we had the principal money upfront, but to set aside about forty-four thousand dollars uh to pay off a quarter of truck two and any necessary interest?
Yes. Yes, I think that's a very good idea.
Do we have to vote on that?
I'll second it if that.
Okay, I will. I'm gonna do it on all the debt service, but I would move that we pay a hundred, this is including principal and interest or for the fiscal year twenty-four budget, a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for the library loan, fifty-six thousand eight hundred and fifteen for the tandem axle, and forty-four thousand for the F-five fifty truck, what we're calling truck number two.
Done, deal.
And those numbers include principal and?
Yes.
I, I agree.
I'll second it.
Okay, we'll, we'll call a vote on sideboard side.
Yes, we'll give.
And yeah.
I'll do it anyhow.
That's a favorable.
You watching your copy?
That's a favorable.
Not yet, but I will soon.
It's a chance. Those numbers are actually, all of those, truck two, Michelle.
That just takes a big bite, the three twenty-eight. It takes a big bite, I was, I'm gonna be desperate.
I know, I know. I'm, no comment.
Yeah. Do you guys vote?
Yes.
We did, yeah.
We, we don't have to vote.
Okay, true.
Okay.
Okay.
The fine.
Uh, do we have any other questions for Sarah?
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah. And thank you, Sarah, you're very.
Oh, no problem. Thank you. And if you guys, yeah, anytime, if you have any other questions, let me know. And I'll, I'll try to send that out tomorrow or Friday. Um an example of a prior MLP, um the municipal breakout. So you guys can see what I was talking about, so you can see the different um for under one note each loan, okay?
Thank you, Sarah.
That'd be great.
Okay, have a good evening.
You too.
You too.
Thanks.
Are, are anybody who's here?
Good morning. Lauren Shaw, are you here for the community center?
I am. Um I was under the impression that there was some concern about the community center budget, so I'm here to answer any questions that you might have about that.
So I'll, I'll defray the concerns we raised yesterday.
Okay.
Um and we understand that, you know, once again, we're not picking on you. We're just looking at places where there are large budget increases. And unfortunately, because of the um, um what do you call them, repairs that have to be done to Valley Galle, that funding stream is no longer available to you.
Right.
So you look like you have a very big increase. So um we had a few questions. And the park's giving up yoga. So we had a few questions about the yoga, if there should be a, a participant buy-in, you know, to defray that cost. And there was a question about the tent. Is there, um since it's a one year thing, someone had said there were other uh ways to get a tent at half the price. And we're wondering about, in the interim, since it is only a one year thing because of the building of the pavilion, is there any other thing like using the fire pavilion or anything that, that, you know, could work?
Okay, so let's, let's start with yoga. Uh we, the parks commission asked us if we would take over that amount of money, um just shift it from their budget to our budget, so we're not increasing the budget. Um, um that's, that was what we were told, that we were just shifting it.
Can you, can you stop there? Is that what happened?
Yeah, she, she, Melissa mentioned that, yes.
The parks department budget decreased and they're about to increase the money.
Well, their, their budget went up because they want to add other things to it.
But it did, so their budget went up even more. It's really more, okay. So sixteen thousand, so the sixteen thousand increase includes a change of four thousand from the parks department too?
That's right.
Okay, that was my clue. It, it was a zero.
But the issue remains, is it the?
If you have four thousand more dollars.
But no, the issue remains, is the, is the town subsidizing yoga? Or should we ask that people pay to attend yoga?
That was a question. The town has been subsidizing yoga for thirteen years.
Well, maybe we shouldn't have been. That's the question that came up last night.
Yeah, but.
It's not my opinion.
Right.
It's not disrespectful. It's just the question that came up.
Yeah.
I, there's, my couple thoughts. There's two is, you open up, if you say you're gonna charge for yoga.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Or I don't use the beach, are we gonna charge for the beach? So.
That's a good idea. Then they would pay for the beach money.
Well, okay. Two is that, you know, the other, this is more philosophical, okay? You know, the taxpayers have been paying for that. They've requested it. It is their money, if they're paying for it. So, you know, that, you know, I think the bigger is, issue on the budget wise, and it's hard to settle because there's, you know, last, yesterday, Melissa, you talked about, usually we have three hundred thousand dollars in free cash.
Yeah, our average is about three fifty.
Three fifty. So that's about six or seven percent of the budget. It is not needed. So before we go, in my opinion, before we go ask some people to give money for yoga, where can we tighten up on this budget?
Yes.
Now, I'm not looking to bare bone cut it, but we've got like, you know, if we can find twenty, twenty-five thousand, you know, you know, that's what we need to get to there.
So I just wanna clarify that three hundred and fifty thousand isn't from people over budget. That, that's not three hundred and fifty thousand of the money that was.
Right.
Well, you know, percentage.
It makes a portion of it, but it's not.
I know, but we, we're.
I just want that to be clear.
And the majority of it is coming from revenues that come in.
Right, so like that sixteen thousand two hundred that the factory just sold, or that also.
Yeah, but you know, it's interesting. Jim doesn't mention when he asks for the truck, there's thirty thousand dollars difference because he could auction it off. So you, you know.
Because we can't, we have to, the way the municipal budgeting works, we can't count on that.
I know you can, but you can give a fairer picture. That's why I'm going back to the capital issue.
We can only.
Yeah, but we can understand what's coming in and give back, even though it's not budgeted that way. So, right, I just wanna say that we weren't picking on you. We were just looking at the differences in the budget and thinking overall how to help smooth it out and what changes, you know, etc.
If you realize how ludicrous it is, and we're talking about thirty-five hundred dollars for yoga, and we've just, you've just been discussing hundreds of thousands of dollars for trucks.
We do. We, we do, we do. But the percentage increase is kind of the same, which is also ludicrous.
When somebody didn't wanna pay me three hundred dollars, they said, you know, it's like, well, it's just three hundred dollars. But if I have a hundred customers who don't pay me three hundred dollars, it's not just three hundred dollars.
But Melissa, do we have a, like, we say this is our revenue and this is what we come in. Do we know what percentage of that? you know, the free cash comes from like revenue?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
I've gone to five-year analysis, it's like seventy thousand dollars.
Yeah.
A year?
Yes.
No, I mean, maybe we put something additional in revenue. We, when we get with Don, we say, here's our revenue picture.
I think, it could be the same. I think the accountant puts in those numbers.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
Mickey, yours.
Um, I'm just wondering, excuse me, about this charging people for going to yoga in the community center or for going to play, maybe then they're going to play bridge, they should also pay money. How do you propose you're going to have to have somebody be there, collect the funds, record the funds? You're, you're setting up a whole new thing where you're going to have, you know, you're going to have to have somebody who's in billing and, and collecting the money and where it goes, how it goes into the accounts so that you know it's into the community center. You are just adding a whole new bunch of stuff.
Might just answer that. I don't think you would. This wasn't my idea, but I just want to say that I, I think that we're paying Connie to do yoga. So if you, if we didn't pay anymore and you came to do yoga, you would pay Connie however much she charges. So there would be no one in the town that would have to collect any money.
Okay, and here's another thing. There are people who are taking advantage of this and it's a way that they can get a good service, a good healthy thing for them to get, to get some yoga or even to go play bridge or mahjong. It's good, it's good health for people. And to say that, oh, now we're going to charge you these good health things. And maybe some of these people really can't afford it. I'm going to say, if I have to go pay ten dollars to go yoga, I, I think I'm not going to go. Or I'll opt out to that. I mean, you know, people opt out for taking, uh, prescriptions. This is sort of a prescription they're going to opt out for before even the bills. And, and I just don't think it's a, a healthy way to be looking at what we are doing in this town for, so we're helping, you know, everybody and, and to help people who can go play yoga or whatever else do things at the community center. I, I think there shouldn't be a charge for that. I really and truly don't.
So, um, the last five years, our budget's never gone over twenty thousand and I think this year we're hovering right around there.
Yeah.
Um, so I'm just wanting to think about two things. Number one, well, tell me what the total budget looks like right now, if you.
I think it's sixteen, eight, and then plus salaries. I mean, for you or the total budget?
Yeah, I'm talking.
And, and once again.
For the town, for the town, I mean.
Oh, for the town? Five, five million, five million, seven hundred forty thousand, six hundred seventy-seven and sixty-four thousand.
So if it were, if somehow it were only.
Just to be exact.
If it were only four million and we were twenty thousand, we'd be about like, half of, half of a percent of, is it less than half a percent?
Does anyone have any concrete proposals to change the budget right now?
Yeah, I just wanted.
So anyway, so we're not even, we're not even one percent of the budget. So, and just hear me out. We, I think we have to see twice and how much we, you know, our transportation is so great and our police are the best. And our highway department is the best and our fire, fire department is the best. And we know the library is the best library.
Yes.
And the community center is pretty good.
It's great.
Community center is the best. So we like to keep it as it's going. And if you want to have a proposal for next year, the, for the FY twenty-five, we can talk about it, but we've been working on FY twenty-four since, I don't know, Melissa, December. And, uh, Melissa helped us put in for the tent when it became apparent that we were going to have the pavilion this year. So, uh, we've already paid a deposit on the tent.
Uh, well, there were. What?
For this, for, uh, June, and it's a June, July, August contract. So I don't think we should try to fix what we're voting right now.
Yeah, so just, I think the way to look at actually the percentage of the budget is to take out the entire education expense because that's mandated and we have absolutely no control over that. So really, the town budget is about, um, is about four million dollars.
Are you proposing to cut yoga from the budget?
No, 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 I'm not. We were just raising issues to look at and we should move on to look at departments that grew and why, because that's what we should do. And then we say, okay, there are reasons for that. It's okay. But we were raising it to say, when a department's budget grows that much or changes, let's ask the right questions.
Right.
And that's what we did and you answered it without changing anything.
There we go.
Okay.
Okay.
So we can move on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. I could have told you that in the first one.
I'd like to say.
If there's no other, uh, concerns with the operating budget, we, we really have to, we have a lot of the special articles now become a little bit more complicated. Oh, sorry, Mickey.
Um, so on this budget that you show, it is not the, uh, the numbers were reduced for the library operating budget uh, because we were asked, you know, how much is, if you take this off and how much is it to take that off, without telling us that you're going to take that off. And so, uh, these numbers were resubmitted.
And she's looking at an old budget.
I don't, I don't.
We just got the numbers today and put the numbers in.
Yeah, I don't think we cut you off for anything.
The current library budget is the budget that Mark.
They were jointly sent on February twenty eighth.
The current library budget is the budget that Mark.
No one's even said the number, right? So the library general is in at thirty-seven thousand four hundred fifty-five. Is that correct?
Just a second, let me tell you. Library general is thirty-seven four fifty-five.
And library maintenance is fifteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-five.
Correct.
Yeah, well, that's where we are.
That's where we are.
How about wages? Will we pay them or not?
No, we're not going to pay them.
I think.
You don't think that it is.
I think that was four hundred twenty-eight dollars that would be articulated and considered over, but I think that should be added back in.
And once again, for clarification, I've had several backlogs with Mark and the current numbers, Mark believes reflect everything, meaning the changes to him becoming salary and to depart, to changes for part-time employees to cover both sick time and holiday pay.
Correct. So you have that number down for wages being what?
Sixty-four, five sixty-five.
Thank you. Okay.
Right.
Does that answer your question?
That answers my question. You have the correct numbers now.
There we go.
And we still, and the only thing, yeah, all good, not about the issue, but look at the electricity bill and changes to supply.
Yeah, I will, I will. I haven't, I haven't had time to work that.
Well, don't do anything. I'll come see you because I just came from the solar and that's the analogy.
Okay, yeah, but that's the only thing we really have to look at.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I have that down. I have a little note somewhere in the town.
I don't know yet. Are we done with the operating budget yet?
Well, I mean, I've grown up and things you brought up to Sean about this thing, I've brought up to supply.
Right.
I don't, you know, Sean I thought was more of, you know, will do the best, but, um,
Yeah.
you know, and then, uh, you know, if we're, we're here, we're, we're.
Right, and the only other issue we had yesterday with the beach monitors, but it's kind of like the same argument about the four thousand dollars, so.
Well, it's, it's a worry in a way that people can choose.
Right, exactly. But I'm saying that's all of our issues that we were raising.
So now I, I want to raise a general issue because Michelle raised it earlier. She asked me that. I thought the timing was a little odd, but I'm just going to go out there and say this. I have no interest in overtaxing people or being unfair or threatening them. However, I also recognize, however, I am not a penny wise pound foolish person and I think it's important to make certain types of investment. And I, I want to point out the excellent analysis that Frank sent out today, which I really appreciated.
Wish I could have to burn the sheet.
Um.
We talked about it yesterday.
Hold that, hold on a second.
Um, the tax analysis.
Uh, just the percentages, you know.
Yeah, because Frank made an excellent point about we're not trying to get back to where we were with, with the free cash. Trying to get back to the rate that.
Yeah, I, I just think, and then you suggested, I'll call Don and get, you know, he can tell me more. He comes in on Saturdays, right?
I think so.
Yeah, I think you can. I see you through the truck here. I was going to drop him.
So that was the big picture item that like from the finance committee, thought we should try to pick a number and then see.
We have to explain it.
Right, pick the number and why and then think about, do we, did that matter?
All you did was the question about what the tax rate was and I answered that.
No, but it was a spreadsheet.
It was a spreadsheet. There it is.
So.
Um, and my, we, we're bringing that up is that, um, if we're comparing to last year, it looks like a big increase. But last year is not of the realistic comparison.
I said that in my presentation.
Because last year was artificially lowered.
That's why we.
So the, but the realistic comparison is to two years ago, which is seven point two eight. And even as it stands now with the monies we're suggesting to pay down capital and the monies we're suggesting to pay employees to bring our, our rates up to a more competitive salary range. And I can talk to you and all you like after the meeting about how important that is and how crazy things are out there right now. Um, we're still talking about a tax rate lower than what it would have been in twenty twenty.
Right, I know that.
And so I feel like, um, this, this perpetual feeling that we must find every penny and cut to the bone is, is kind of a, I, I'm not saying we shouldn't look at everything because clearly we should and unreasonable.
We're just giving money away. It's okay.
Right. I, I don't think we need to do that, but at the same time, I think that, um, a lot of times you get what you pay for. And if one.
I love being mansplained. I really do.
I, I'm not a man. Last I checked, I, I feel like.
I'm just saying, these are exactly the things that I said. All I said was the facts. And my, and the thing is, we all agree that it's important to keep that in mind.
Right.
That leaves us with no conclusions, but only a starting point.
I, I would agree. I just, I felt my understanding perhaps was mistaken, but I felt that earlier in the meeting, there was a suggestion that we had to cut several hundred thousand dollars in order to get the budget back down to where it had been. And I am suggesting that I don't agree with that outlook, that I think that if there are things that could be type that makes sense that, but I'm open to it, but I don't know that I feel compelled to, to search out those things at this eleventh hour to get the budget down to a number that I don't think we need to get it necessarily down to. That's all. I mean, I, I would rather pay down loans to not have to pay the interest in months forward.
I might agree.
Um, I think that's a better use of our money. That's right.
Right, and we just want to remain cognizant of that and that's why that chart is very helpful. And sticking in the seven, what's the number where everyone's talking about? Seven point oh one, because, you know, because, right, and, and I just wanted to put that in perspective, as Frank said, right? Like last year, we kept taxing artificially low. This year, we've made huge investments in, in BPW, which I am a huge fan of, of bringing up, aim. We've made significant, um, increases, you know, in both parks and the community center for change, you know, even though it's the same operating, it's more budget dollars because they used the Valley Galley money, so we had to allocate that money. And we have made significant increases in the vehicles. So we have really, you know, risen everything up and I just want to be clear, like, there's a lot going on in this budget. And I agree, we shouldn't force trade, but I also think it's always important, like we just do with the community center, to ask the questions and make sure it's central to their mission and they're sure that, you know, that's, that's what they need.
Okay. I got a question on, on Sean's, probably. How are you recommending we pay for that?
So this is what I think we, is a good discussion and hopefully we could wrap this up by seven because Selectler does have another agenda.
Yeah, we're not important.
Uh, no. No, this is important, but basically what we have done is we have always put in the fire vehicle as a, as a borrowing. But it's possible we might be able to pay for pagers, the nozzle, and maybe something else out of free cash.
Yeah, electronics.
The only problem is as currently drafted, the budget has us leaving eighteen thousand dollars in free cash.
Where are you?
Uh, FY twenty-four proposed budget is down around the Excel one nineties.
Um, did, do we have any, this is a small one, but do we, so we basically need to figure out if we're going to borrow free cash stabilization, how we're going to pay for things. One small question.
How much is stabilization? Did we have, do we still have fifty grand going into stabilization?
Yes.
We do.
Okay.
And there's six hundred?
No, not on this one.
Not on the budget.
No, it's have plenty of money.
The finances, that's magical, fifty grand.
Okay, so.
But let's, just before we get into paying for it, let's talk about stabilization. Because we know we have more loans coming up, more capital needs in the next few years. You know, the finance group, like it should be fifty, but if we're going to take some and pay for some of Sean's and finance, I don't know how, or where all that would fall out. But I, I do think we, you know, uh, Susan, you brought up the issue, you know, okay, this is, these are real costs. So we're better to save it now and not pay the interest if interest rates will be at five percent next year for the different things we're going to need. I, 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 I don't have a problem standing up and say, look, we have capital needs. We're putting more money in stabilization this year so we can pay cash next year so we don't incur interest. You're either going to pay for it now or you're going to pay for it later.
Yeah, and the.
And we, we can't, we talked about it. We can't just worry about this year. We've got to worry, you know, as Sarah said, you know, got to worry about the out years too.
And I was just going to say, I mean, even though there'll be some supply chain, um, supply printing increases different, like we're seeing some of the trucks coming online, there's continued going to be inflation. I mean, you know, the dollars, the mix value is.
I know, some of the whole, some of the, you can go out and buy some Ford trucks that basically own zero interest. Chevrolet just shut down a truck plant because they have a hundred days, they have a hundred days of inventory.
Right, it might be about the same.
And they don't learn the game. They're just not going to.
Yeah, we, so we, alright, so more generically, I'm about to.
I, I, I have a question. So we probably want to leave more than eighteen thousand dollars in free cash. So we probably want to find some way to.
If you use stabilization, you have more stabilization.
Right.
Yeah.
I can just, at least two items that I'm not clear on in here. Are we keeping the truck in first?
The highway truck. I would rather not do it. And then if we wanted to put that money into stabilization, do that because the biggest concern seems to be, um, I know the regular replacement of vehicles, but bigger than that, it's always come back to we have more trucks coming up next year. And I would agree with the idea of putting the money in stabilization and then buying it out, right?
You're talking the seventy-eight.
Yeah.
Seventy-eight that, not the one sixty, right.
That would bump our free cash rate back up to a very reasonable level.
Um, so you, you would be suggesting doing, doing what exactly? Taking the seventy-eight thousand, take, take it out, but put it into stabilization? And just, I wasn't able to do that second part.
We'd have to see. Another small thing, but we should get out of like, what's up with the conservation commission and the.
I, I had that on my head. Any other thing that I think is going to be controversial? I, I, don't decide where it's going. Just tell me if it's staying in here. I think that'll be easier and then we'll see what the new balance is. Is, is the truck? Are you going to support the feasibility study and how much are we going to pay for town hall repairs? So those are the three big things that I think will make a big difference in the free cash.
Frank, one question before the one. The analysis, the spreadsheet that you did, that was based on this total budget?
Yeah, it's total, the total of the numbers, the numbers we did last night.
Just want to make sure.
By seven four.
So that includes the feasibility study and the town hall as a truck.
Yeah, includes everything. Okay, so we'll then.
What was my proposal for, let me just pull it up, for the tank, the town hall repairs?
You got it.
Seventy, seventy-five thousand.
No, my proposal, sorry, sorry. No, it wasn't with the finance committee. They wouldn't know. It was fifty-nine thousand six hundred would get us roof repaired, power washed, some painting, boiler HVAC. It wouldn't address this floor here.
Wait, and I actually, um, I actually was thinking that we could, because Jim thinks that the boiler could wait a couple of years. I was even going to suggest that we take that out as well. I came up with forty-nine and six.
If that can wait, then I'm favorable to that. And then I would lower that seventy-five thousand to forty-nine thousand six hundred for town hall maintenance and repairs.
So what about the peace buildings?
I'm not favorable to it myself.
Yeah, why is that?
Because I feel that the space that we have here can generally be used to accomplish what it needs to accomplish. Um, short of re-engineering the building and, and, and undergoing a major renovation that begins with a forty-nine thousand five hundred dollar study. Um, and then I would rather address the maintenance items to make sure that we upkeep this building, um, at this time.
That makes sense. And then my, but my other question about that is how we deal with the record storage? This has come up before. Why that's a separate issue. I know, but, but the feasibility study was probably going to address that issue. So can we, uh, change the town hall feasibility study to have a, a study that says, what are you going to do with your records?
I, I actually, there are two issues that have come up recently. Um, my, my concern, sorry. Um, my concern, well, first of all, Melissa had a really interesting idea the other day about some possibilities to deal with record management. Um, and, and we actually talked a little bit tomorrow about it. The idea of needing to. Um, and and we actually talked a little bit tomorrow about it, the idea of needing to possibly switch out to some of the other towns that are doubtless also suffering from the same issue, to see if there could be some type of joint solution.
Hmm.
Um, what that would be is unclear, but it's worth at least having the conversation because.
I don't know, I think it's very.
Very, very what?
Well, I mean, we want our own records, I mean, it might be a shared service, you're saying, not a shared.
A shared service, correctly, correct, and there are different types of records, some of which,
There might be, but there'll be three different.
There's different type of records, some of which never get access, and some of which do occasionally get access, so there's some decisions to be made. But I'm, I think that it would be worth looking at that, but it might be something that we could do at least temporarily internally to try to come up with some ideas, different ideas of what we could do about record storage. Um, and the second, the piece, so I just wanna summarize some of the things that came up in a previous Selector meeting when we talked about the town hall. When Scott was here, he also expressed concern over, you know, a large feasibility study where we would walk walk out of, be paying fifty thousand dollars and not have enough concrete to show for it. And maybe I'm just like, don't, maybe I don't like paying for something, and I don't have a plan in the end. I see the value of having a diversity of plans for which to choose. But my concern with this building is that I think that what we do need to investigate is what to do about the moisture problem in the basement, because I have concerns about how it's gonna affect the long-term viability of the building as a whole. Like, the one would issue is, can we use that space, but the other issue is, what damages it doing to the building to not address the moisture?
Do we need to use that space?
And I don't know much of that.
Well, it's.
Right now, it's record storage amongst among others.
Yeah.
I'm not familiar with how many people are in and out of the building working.
No one is down there now because they can't, it is occasioned, but if we could rectify it so it was usable space, we would use it.
They can't, some won't be.
But there's also the question of, is it current condition, it's conditioned, threatening the integrity of the building as a whole.
And the records as well.
And I don't know the answers, and the records, I don't know the answer to that.
Do we have, we don't have anything in measures for humidity down there?
Oh, yeah, I can bring you my humidity, I can bring my basement, I could bring it over. I mean, you can buy it on Amazon for ninety nine, you know.
So, just to corral the uh consensus, so I I'm inclined to agree with you on um having the forty nine, five or six for the maintenance, and not do a feasibility study, but perhaps at some point have an understanding about how to proceed with the records, so that's not a budget item.
I only would do.
And this is definitely not a discussion for tonight, but I'm wondering, we have so many people in this town that are architects, this, that make in contractors, like, maybe we could just, just like we had other committees, like, I think the moisture problem is something you probably need a specialist, but for the use of space and records, I know, like, I've done major record project, I know Lynn's done major record project, you know, uh, projects, we've worked in government, with seven years of record, we limited space, we had it digitized, that's why I'm saying it's a big headache about, like, happy archetype, and every town will want its own, so it'll probably be more expensive to go with the other.
It sounds to me like you just volunteered your consulting services.
I knew it!
It only took her an hour and fifty three minutes, I nominate her now.
No, but I really think we should think about other people who have that experience and really.
You say you have it.
Okay, let's go on that.
Hey, you know, I agree.
Well, she also said a committee, so she's better reach out to some people she knows and have that experience.
But I think that instead, because I agree, like, forty thousand dollars on a study that may or may not, we might like and we might not.
Yeah, okay.
Um, and I think the moisture issue may need to get dealt with by having some people
Yeah, but.
give us bids and, you know, what.
Yeah, I can tell you how I did my moisture, you foam those walls and the moisture built away.
Who?
You foam them, spray foam.
Really?
I don't, I think there might be a drainage issue, I think there is a. Did you come for the basement part, did you come?
Yeah.
Yeah, you also.
Well, no, he did, and the same thing, but he he fixed his.
Yeah. I fixed mine.
You don't think it's a drainage issue?
I I'd have to go back and look at it, I don't have no problem going down and looking at it, so that's, it's uh.
But you didn't do it at prevailing wage.
Those guys were at prevailing wage, A and R is at prevailing wage, I had a long discussion with him. Yeah, but he's paying all his guys over twenty some dollars a year.
For us, it would be about sixty something.
Yeah, so I.
It's crazy high, um.
Uh, what about the ball field?
So, and let me just make sure I understand, we're taking out the feasibility study, town hall is becoming forty nine, six, and now that, so that'll be free cash
Yes.
because it's replacing basically the other one.
That's good.
What what happened with your truck, because you guys kinda went right past that.
We're putting the money into stabilization.
Well, well, I agree with Melissa, let's take it off if we don't wanna pay for it this year, and then see what we have in free cash and decide how much.
And we're not paying.
Okay, okay, so take it off.
Yes, but how much is it, so stabilization gets six thirty or something?
What is? It's a.
So right now, with those changes, you would have ninety six thousand, three oh six, sixty seven in free cash.
It's four.
I am four forty five.
Wait, 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 Melissa, on July one, you're saying?
No.
Oh, because did I not, was the town hall maintenance and repairs not added into the free cash yet?
Did you open up the one?
You mean?
No, the tunnel maintenance and repairs was was raising appropriately, because we didn't have any left.
Okay, then that's where I'm lost, okay.
Wait, I'm sorry, I just, I'm losing on the free cash, because free cash, you mean, for the remainder of the year, we would have. That one ninety, that can roll over.
What? Not one ninety.
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 But we'll have it until June thirtieth, and then it goes away until we get resurfaced.
That can roll over.
Right, don't say roll over.
No, 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 it doesn't have to, that's the.
It doesn't roll over.
It doesn't roll over, it goes away.
It doesn't roll.
But that ninety thousand doesn't have to get resurfaced.
Just the bank, you're gonna sort of like, yeah.
Yes, it does.
It's gonna lose it, but yes, you're kind of right, if we leave a hundred, it it's gonna be.
It's likely we will get a hundred.
So, so I don't understand why we wouldn't put it in stabilization, so if we needed more available.
We're not saying we're not going to, we wanna see what numbers, the numbers, before we decide what.
Run the numbers first, and then we'll decide.
Okay, good, because just to remind you that we have the reserve fund at thirty.
It's actually less available in stabilization, because that requires a two thirds vote at town meeting. If you wanna say more available, less available.
Very good plan, it's in free cash.
But you still have to have.
I love it.
You still have to have a vote, put it in reserve.
Very please.
But it it just.
Put it out, it's like August.
We're looking for that.
Why, why?
It'd be an October.
Then we get to, you're raising and appropriating that, you're raising and appropriate your reserve on the town meeting board.
Yeah.
So, so anyways, we're covering out, what was the number?
Of the, what?
Free cash, you know, the difference between.
Ninety something. I know what's for about ninety six.
Ninety six, okay, but.
Cause I put zero.
But we have a hundred ninety seven thousand, six hundred in fire department items, I have no planning.
But that will be two.
I have a hell of a ton.
There's a special article, we have, we have seen that.
Borrow.
Got to, got to, okay, okay, okay.
You want to borrow for this?
No. I don't, I don't even want a ten thousand, golden nozzle.
Right, so now I can take and I can put all of the things except for the truck come from free cash, right? So if I did the.
So wait, the jaws of life, which are not called.
Yes.
The hydro, hydraulics, favor.
Eighty eight, eighty ten.
Okay, we could, and then that would use a whole of free cash though.
For what, for, oh, the one ninety seven, wait, was that the one ninety seven, am I breaking that down?
The part that are not equal.
Fifty two, sixty six, and ten, and pay that out of free cash.
So this two thirty five.
We've got to break this up to take out, whatever that is, become lower again.
Well, right, but that's what we hit this.
So Melissa, what Melissa's saying, I think, makes quite a bit of sense, which is to pay for the jaws of life, the pagers, and the nozzle out of free cash, as long as we're committed to buying them.
The non-vehicle issue.
The non-vehicle, the vehicle.
And then borrow a hundred and thirty, a hundred and twenty nine, that, right?
Yeah, it'd be a.
It'll be a hundred twenty nine plus or minus, depending on what the combination.
Hundred and thirty. Yeah, a hundred forty nine.
Which we have to increase our debt targets, it's a lot less than one ninety seven, so.
It's a lot less than one ninety seven, so.
Why?
We wouldn't be increasing it until.
The next year.
Right, well, and possibly even two years, it all depends on when the truck comes.
Well, I think that, I think even anticipating the, these trucks will come a lot quicker.
Yeah, I mean.
I said, I think it'd be the one that he's modifying, it's gonna take a longer, I think that, you know, some of those SUVs, you, you know, I mean, they have to be.
He's modifying those that we already have.
I know, but if he will, or someone else will, but I I think he needs to.
It's not bad, it's just.
I think that'll put too much.
And um, and I know we're not there yet, but we're making a lot of, I think, progress, and we all really see things out of the eye when discussing it. So I think we should at some point talk about how we wanna explain things, because the Airbnb tax and other things explaining the rest.
Well, why not?
We should graphically figure out how to really explain what we're trying to do and build, you know, you know what I'm saying? And why that's important to our solvency.
Um, coming back to the actual line items, what is the answer on that Tom Tom being used for the green field, the green.
Yeah, they were, and the chair was not in favor of.
Giving away ten thousand dollars.
Bring it, right, for the, for that.
For what?
For the ball field.
But it's in favor of the trail.
But they are gonna, yes, they're gonna go on the trail, and they don't need to.
What's the trail, where's that?
Don't we have someone that, don't we have someone that we can name the trail after and can get found on?
The trail's not in.
But is that somewhere around here?
Oh, so.
I read trail.
No, not me, I don't work.
So, so why have have, we have not gotten any wiggle room for the Parks Commission on uh.
You've got a lot of wiggle room on that.
A lot.
Oh, no, I mean, on paying for this out of their ARCA funds.
Well, the ARCA funds, we could really, I mean, the playground project is moving quite along, the project that stalled out much more is the pavilion. Um, that would probably be the more likely solution.
To have wiggle room?
Yes, I mean.
But like, the pavilion.
I'm not dealing with those two ladies again, so. And you have to live with one. I say with love.
But I do think, I mean, the playground project, we had, uh, at least one bid with the town doing the demo that came in under.
Which is another issue that I have.
Yeah.
But my issue is.
I I'd like to say something on this show.
They they have reached.
They got four people, a hundred and sixty hours a week.
That's not what uh, the point is, the point is, it's a hidden cost, it's the.
Yeah, but those four people are.
No, no, please, can we just.
Okay, not a fight.
Does anyone have recommendation, motions, action items on the fiscal year point for budget? Do you wanna defund the ball field and force the Selector's hand to pay for it out of ARCA funds?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
I I don't agree with that.
I don't, I think, because.
Because ARCA funds have been assigned, okay, the pavilion is run into different kind of issues, and you don't, you can't.
No, I don't think, um, it's just the Parks Commission, uh, that that has, they didn't have to get a hundred thousand dollar or eighty thousand dollar. Did they take any of the equipment out, did they reduce the size of the playground, were they receptive to any suggestions about what we did?
When last we left it.
Yeah.
They were going to look at the plans and solicit public opinion and have a hearing and come back to us with that information
They can. Oh, good.
That has not completed its cycle yet, but they didn't completely do it.
No, I have a millimeter.
Well, that's.
So, I, you know, in the end, I can't answer what they'll come back with.
The wheels are just.
I can say that I did ask them to consider going back to the bidder, the original designer, and asking them the question slightly differently in that, yes, this plan meets all of those checkboxes, but is there a way we could meet most or all of the checkboxes within less expensive plan by combining equipment, and it was saying, whether they do that or not, I.
Okay, oh, that's.
But I did ask, and they didn't want me to do it.
Uh, good.
One other.
As, but anyway, I'm sorry, so I always, I thought that if that was the case, then they would have the wiggle room to pay for the ball field. And we'd have to be, I'm sorry.
Um, one other item, I guess, is just a hundred and twenty nine borrowing, hopefully, it sounds like the eighty nine thousand for the fire vehicles are.
I got kind of.
Okay.
Sounds like, sounds like the eighty nine thousand is pretty uh solid of a number, because it's based on state contract, but for the forty thousand, Melissa, can you please uh, ask Sean to get a uh estimate?
Right, and I I think we we need to have someone else, so that's put too much pressure.
No, they will, they, that's what they're saying.
Yeah, yeah, it's crazy, I admire them for doing it, I feel I'll help them, but if you want.
Yeah.
That's what they're saying.
Yeah. Crazy.
So with those changes now.
Where are we at, we're at seven oh five.
Twenty seven, seven oh six.
We're at twenty seven, we're we're at twenty seven thousand without putting any in free cash other than the fifty thousand that you should just forget about because it's not really this budget process.
Funny, really. I I, so, I think we did it, did we do it?
Okay, how do you feel about it, I feel they're kind of there.
It seems kind of low, and we had said we were gonna take the truck off, because we were gonna put money in the stabilization paperwork next year, which we're not really doing, if we are doing what we're doing.
I don't know, I don't know if I understand what you're saying, but I do understand that the capital budget was kind of decided, right? Along with this, is that what we did?
Well, maybe what we can do is now that we have, we made a lot of decisions tonight, and we kind of made a lot of movement,
Is that what we're saying?
maybe we can take this back and review it.
Let her run the numbers, send the sheet out, I'll run the percentages.
Right. Yes.
Okay, and I'll give, I'll I'll write an email to Don, see if I can get it from Saturday, that'll be better when we see him. If we hadn't had that four seventy five last year, what would have been our rate?
So, right, and the other, the other thing is about meeting next week, if we wanna meet again, to go back with a a few days to think about the changes that we've made. I know that it is, there are some holidays, holidays, um, when, are you familiar with when we do not wanna meet?
Yes. Yeah.
Oh, so in other words, next week we can't meet?
Yeah, um, the first kind of passover is the fifth, so.
You don't like that.
Which is, which is.
Wednesday night.
Wednesday night and Thursday night, so we can meet on Wednesday, we can meet on Monday.
Uh, next week would be the midday, right? You were gonna move to one, were we not?
Okay.
Next Wednesday.
Yes.
So I think contingent upon if I wanna, how should, do you think it would be respectful to meet at one P M on the Wednesday, or do you think that would be?
Are we on the record or off the record? I know I'll meet one person that will complain, but um, I I think, yeah, one o'clock on Wednesday, the holiday doesn't start till sundown, but if people are traveling, so I I I think I'm gonna be the first night, so that's fine.
Seven oh five.
We have to start.
Well, maybe we could do.
I'll make you some matzah, Brian.
I think.
I want, I want.
I mean, we could do it morning.
I can't do it morning, I got a, I got a very.
No, I think, uh, you know, one o'clock or twelve, you have one o'clock, it's the twelve.
No twelve, we agreed, no more twelve.
Because why, you're hungry?
Uh, because everyone loves the time he's having.
Melissa, you were getting a key taken out. And there's emotional breakdown, it's very bad.
I wish you would break down. Yeah, but Melissa.
So, one o'clock next Wednesday?
I'm a. Yeah.
I mean, is that good with you?
I already booked my cocktail party tonight, so I'll be hitting the.
Well, you didn't invite me, unless we would have gotten out of here early.
We do. We do have.
It's five thirty, isn't it?
We do have a policy against meeting on Friday, so I'm just gonna check with the authorities that this is not infringing on that.
It's an error, so it shouldn't be, it starts at sundown, but, you know.
Well, we don't wanna push the boundaries.
Well, right.
Um, so I will just double check, but contingent upon that, maybe we'll meet at one and just go over the changes that we made today.
I mean, and if you, Melissa, you don't know when you're gonna be done to get it to us, do you?
I'll, I'm I'm gonna get it to you right now, and but I was, I'm feeding the truck out.
And I'm gonna also, you're good with.
That's what was decided, yes.
We're, I was just saying, we're meeting Tuesday instead of Wednesday, if there's.
What about Tuesday at one P M?
Sure, whatever.
Sunset.
Don't get, be so excited.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, one o'clock?
Tuesday, one o'clock.
Tuesday, one o'clock.
So, we don't need to have a meeting.
Go graphic.
Yeah, it was just.
And then my next question is, we do have to have an informational meeting for the public.
Yes, yeah.
That's traditional, and so when do we wanna do that, I'm sorry, what? Traditionally, the finance committee has publicated informational meeting for the public, so.
So I would say, once we agree to this, which it sounds like we're very close.
Tuesday at one P M.
On Tuesday, when are you printing the warrant?
Not till the twelve.
So I would say, how about, of the following.
I don't know, I'm talking.
If we need to meet again.
No, we wanna have a meeting.
No, I know, but the informational meeting is usually like the week before, right, our meeting.
Alright, so we can do that, yeah.
And since nothing can change on it anyway, I guess that might as well be when we do it.
Well, it can change on the floor.
It should help.
Yeah, I know that, but, but it's not gonna make any difference to what we've represented to people at present.
So we can do. So. We can do it like on the eighteenth tax day.
What is, what day of the week is that?
That's our regular Tuesday, meeting, yeah.
At the Tuesday?
Mm-hmm.
Well, I'm I'm fine with that.
And make it, make it a two-hour meeting, and make it.
Two hours, twenty nine.
Last year, last year, nobody came, nobody had anything to say.
Now, say, I mean, I don't know.
Which was over like.
Yeah, and and um, and I know we talked about before, like, but I really think that since, even even though I think we've made really wise choices in a tough year, I think we should really block out what they are and how to explain them, we don't plan who's saying what, but we know we need the information on grants, because it comes up every year. We know we need the information on, you know, whatever was extra and change, if we should try to, I'll try to take, make some charts and graphs and stuff, I think it'd be nice.
I I I am, I agree that the more that we can explain things to people in an accessible, brief manner, we can.
The more likely we are to get to go home for lunch on the time being.
And I mean invariably, everyone will have questions, but you can anticipate the most likely questions. And I mean invariably, everyone will have questions, but you can anticipate the most likely questions.
Just like it's not cold, we're gonna be around the restaurant, it's so cold.
So that.
I don't think so.
We're not gonna what?
Not gonna be.
We're gonna go in the firehouse, that's good, because last year it was cold.
Well, it's your decision.
I, yes, I I I've been for it the whole time, I'm happy to hear that other people support that.
Yeah.
Right now, the warrant is.
The page was.
Our budget and not, so that's good, that'll be three more pages, so. It'll be great.
So.
I think it works really great.
Do we, do we have funding for sandwiches at town meeting?
Where are you looking at me? Yeah.
You want me to make something along that?
Yeah, really, I can make sure one of my favorite. Um, I.
Can I show?
What? But seriously, we can't, let's look at the uh uh budget of the um administrator, of the town office budget. When you guys have left in your budget, leave some money in our budget.
Reserve fund transfer for sandwiches.
That would, that would be shit, that would be shit.
I mean, it's not gonna be happy with that.
I don't like it. I just, I don't mind reserve fund transfer to be ended the other.
Well, what we'll do is I'm gonna serve peanut butter and jelly sandwiches with saltine crackers.
There was a post about.
Wait, I have an idea, let's go up to.
We're not going.
We could make it a lot longer, it's not a bad idea, I'm just saying, the town.
I don't think that we and Jared are meeting.
Yeah, but yeah, we should talk about that a little bit, and if you have any, when there are things, we can just say about everybody, thank you.
I take any more girls, I'm thankful.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Hopefully, but she.
Yes.
But overall, what's your uh E T S N score right now? Post-traumatic threat, what's your score after this year compared to last year?
Good, good, well, alright, thank you.
Oh, get back to you.
I got two.
No, I have not, I have to, I have to, they find for them role of action, action.
Action, I like, I like it the end of the day to have made this.
But both really ran that one.
That's.
Okay, where are we on our?
We are on, I have three.
That is sure.
We are on the meeting, um, so where we are at.
Okay.
Do you wanna start with the planning?
Really?
Let's start, let's start with the planning board.
Well, listen, thank you.
Request.
Hold the line.
Propose updating following monaries only by laws, table of use regulations for recreational uses, ant or or and or recreational facilities seasonal year round, Lake Shore District from permitted as of right to special permit board of appeals.
And I one hundred percent support this, this represents what the town passed and it addressed camps recreational year round in two thousand nine and would fix the entire problem, and I greatly appreciate their having worked that out and getting a plan in place to get it done on this warrant.
Okay, I would, then I would move to add this to the warrant.
Second.
Any other discussion on that? Oh, oh.
Yes.
And yes, so I got the warrant. Melissa, please, um.
There's it in there that I have to add?
I don't.
Okay.
See, I don't know if the warning is the planning board proposed updating the following monaries only by laws.
I'll do it.
Yeah, um.
Okay.
And.
I'm just doing working out myself, I was totally listening.
That's fine, yeah.
Other warrant things, the uh municipal departments uh by law.
I did add that in.
I got an updated one. And I just have a couple of questions for Susan.
I'm trying to find the the language thing, so. That was, uh, we're talking about what you said earlier today, the A T M thing, okay.
Yes. Well, I read the building, but I heard, not yet.
So I'll just.
So, there's a couple of questions, the way that we have it drafted, the select board appoints and remove the inspectors, I'm favorable to that.
What article is it on in here, aware?
I haven't, I haven't gotten a chance to open this yet, so I don't.
Okay.
It's gonna be longer because it it's a decent level, there's like, has four sections to it. Yeah, there you are.
Okay, it's part of the, okay.
So, and and it's modified slightly, but the way that it's currently drafted, it has the select board appointing and removing inspectors or other people who work in the department, which is standard for the town monitoring.
And what we're currently doing.
And what we're currently doing. The way that it's drafted, and she actually tweaked the language a little bit, but the director could be one of the inspectors.
Okay.
So the director could be the building commissioner and so on, the enforcement officer.
Which is what's currently your case?
Yeah, and and then we have a choice for the appointment of the director, it, the term can be no less than three years and no more than five, my inclination was to go with three.
Okay, I mean, that's been pretty consistent with what we've been doing, um, is there a a downside, we just have to do it more often?
Yeah. I'm gonna send you the most recent version, which really didn't change much, but I think she added in something along the lines of the director can be one of the people, and I don't know if that was perfected before, but. Um, since we have a right, I'll just. So section one is about appointing a director.
Are you now reading from the?
From the, which I really think is is.
It's written on there, yeah. Okay, that's fine, I got it.
So section one is just the appointment of the director.
Right.
Section two is responsibilities of the department, section three is supervisory authority of director, and section four is recommendations for appointment of inspectors and staff.
It's, and actually, this is fairly short and sweet as I read it, I mean, it seems fairly compact and clear and, I mean, do you have any thoughts?
I think it puts into our bylaws pretty much what we've been doing.
Exactly.
Instead of having it on a more informal basis.
Okay, I'm good with it.
I'm good with it.
Thanks for uh dealing with Donna and getting it done.
Um.
I made a couple of changes since you died, um, since I sent that to you.
Okay.
Well, the money articles that we changed tonight will change.
Yeah, I'm changing that and then I, so if you, if you can send me the updated wording, I'll I'll get it to you.
I just got it to you, I think, okay. It's a PDF though, I don't know why she did that, but she did.
Okay, so I'll have to type that in tomorrow.
Can you not?
Well, you can, you can, you, it's PDF, you can probably, it's just gonna, it's just gonna end up a little weird, but.
Can you copy and paste the video?
If you can't, let me know, because I usually know our problems, so I'll just cut his editor word document. And I have to add the planning board. Yep. Okay.
And that's a bunch of money art- money articles, and then.
So, are we starting from the non-money articles?
Well, how do, how do you wanna do this?
I have no idea, they don't have numbers, so it's a little tricky.
Well, art, if, so article one, I have no questions, article two, I don't have any questions, article three, and then we begin.
Oh, see her chat, so article.
This is spending limits on revolving funds.
And I think that's, wait a minute, wow, the only thing I noticed is that I. Okay, never mind, it's, it's the next one that I would edit.
Wait, is the compost she bends a new revolving fund or an existing one?
Existing.
Okay, I wasn't.
I didn't know, you didn't know. I was like, that was new to me, that the special services.
And then we have the new revolving funds.
Right, well, protection act, same amount, that community center value. And this was what we approved last week, right?
Recently. And then, next.
So then we've got the transfer to the shared H R manager.
Uh-huh.
Um.
Which we're also putting a little money in the budget, right, they're both funding the. And then thirty thousand in the stabilization fund for retiree health and like insurance.
It will leave?
Right.
It might on my other computer, but it's not letting me on this one.
Um, then the next one is, oh, do you wanna do it with that right now, then I'll, then we'll be good, yeah.
Um, except I need you to do it. Can you just cut and paste it into an email, so I can cut and paste it from there?
Yes.
Yeah, I was kinda surprised that the planning board could do this within the timeframe for a hearing and whatnot, but.
Yay.
They think they can.
It's, it ruined the uh formatting, but I think that's, that's small potatoes.
That's what I'm talking about. And sometimes a T N and I turns into an H when you copy from a P D A, it can do, it can make problems.
What, the cut and paste?
From a P D A, yeah, there's a certain font where a T and an I turns into an H or just disappears. And it's a font that we use, actually, it's been happening to me a lot recently, I forgot which font it.
Extremely, okay, uh, so, uh, free cash destabilization, uh, what is that, wait, the retiree health?
Yes, retiree health, I don't think we have any.
No, I think that we don't have the first three, right?
We'll, we'll.
Culture council, no.
Um.
Voting equipment, no.
Electronic voting for equipment for elections.
So, and there's the.
Presurfaces, Greenheart, Alfield, the sixty-four for the cruiser, twenty-five for the radios.
Mm-hmm.
Seventy, that's gonna come off there.
Uh, so, yeah.
The Southern Berkshire ambulance, that's gonna come off there.
The Sou- wait, Southern Berkshire?
No, sorry, the next one, I didn't know.
Okay. Ah, that's right, feasibility study comes out.
Um, the repairs maintenance is being adjusted to forty-nine six. The thirty thousand dollars for the cattle programs and fire company is staying, the.
It's the being divided, the one ninety-sevens being divided.
Divided into, the first two parts are going to a borrowing and then the the last three are coming out of free cash. Right?
Yep, that's what we agree.
Um, the highway garage is going to stabilization and the and the uh later on, the other ones going to stabilization, but those should probably just be right next to each other. Um, we can change our ordering.
Is that how you do it? Melissa, sorry, I'm not totally paying.
I know, well, I think.
Well, we'll figure that out.
Yeah, I was.
Um, that's not a big deal.
Just, just make a note to.
Yeah. Um, fifty thousand to mil foil.
Right.
The Mass Works grant for million dollars, the.
Ah, me, yeah, me, just a lot of money.
Right, right. Um.
Wait, you skipped municipal vulnerability grant, went to Mass Works.
Yes, because the, that one and the one two before it should be snugged up, should just be next to each other, because they're very similar.
Ah, right, so it's that one that belonged with the twenty-nine, so the twenty-nine and.
What should really happen is the no foil should move up.
Right, yep.
Um, the.
Mass Works grant.
The Mass Works grant, and then the next one is accepting state aid, it looks like chapter ninety, accepting chapter ninety money.
Yep.
And then the one, two, and three related to taxing short-term rentals. Then the consolidated department by law about the building department. And then, um, getting land for the Curtis Road Bridge, and then it looks like.
Getting land at the purchase gift or eminent domain temporary easements, right.
I don't think, we're not actually getting land, we're just clarifying, I don't know what's right, if I'm not mistaken.
I put exactly what she.
Yeah, we're putting exactly what they did.
Okay.
We're gonna dominate me.
Right.
Um, we just, that is something.
And and there's gonna have to be two attachments that go with this map and the explanation.
We should make sure to have a good, an explanation, because for sure, when they see like purchase gift or eminent domain.
Yeah.
It's gonna, I would raise it if I didn't know, right, so.
Yeah. I, yeah, the general, the general gist is, from the early emails from J, first one, he was saying
We just have to be prepared.
we, we're just clarifying that the town owns this for sure.
I'm sorry?
Which is fine.
Can I go back to the budget one second?
Yeah.
Was I supposed to keep in the ball field or take it out?
Keep it in.
Keep it in, okay.
I asked him if he wanted to.
Yeah, maybe, okay, so keep it in, right, okay.
I did. Um.
What was the problem? Better than keep, ask him, we'll clarify.
Kinda like the. Um. And then the next one's the same kind of deal, right, there's two related to the, um.
The Monterey two twenty twenty-three town layout relocation plan?
Those two are both related to the bridge, right, Melissa?
Is that what you mean? To the bridge. The.
The Monterey twenty twenty-three town layout relocation plan?
Yes, and the.
And the, the purchase gift or eminent domain, right, that's right.
Yes, that's right, that's right.
You know what I'm doing, are you ready to accept the comments at this point?
Am I ready to accept?
Yeah. Okay.
I'm gonna print it off for you in two seconds, I just wanted to make sure I had.
Okay, I just see border select, and we could probably change just like word there, I'm sure that's the wording they use, but.
Oh.
And the one before the noise.
Page four of seven. Overloading, almost at the bottom.
You don't want border select, man, you want slideboard?
Yeah.
So you want that also in the Mass Works thing?
Anywhere it is, yeah, sure.
I'll just.
Yeah. Um, then we have the noise, which we can have comments on, but we won't go over the whole thing right now, um. I did run it by Brian and more or less, he he had a couple of comments, one about the uh shooting guns, which I thought there's our, there's exemption in there, so that should cover any shooting of guns, and then he he, his general feeling was that the police department couldn't enforce it and they will be with with discretion as they already enforced to serve as the peace, which he showed with me that mass general law.
And and I went and talked to him as well, and I would agree that that were, that was one of the issues that arose and he feels he feels like it will be helpful, that he he doesn't believe that it will cause a huge impact spike in people complaining and that that they'll use the same reasonable approach, it just gives them a tool that isn't a criminal tool.
Yeah.
Which is.
Yes, that was the point.
A great to have, right.
So after noise by law, we have authorizing permissions and.
I will tell you that I did specifically ask him about what happens in the, there's two towns that have a decimal based plan, Barrington and Lennox, and he said to his knowledge, they're they're not, the police forces in those towns aren't actually using decimal meters to measure anything, or using it as an enforcement tool, so it isn't helpful to have it, so I think we're good.
Yeah. Yeah, I do. Um, the next article is about boards and commissions appointing members of their own.
Right, don't, we have that in every year, right?
Yes, a lot of these, uh, we're gonna do that point.
Yeah. Yeah.
The town will allow the treasurer to borrow money.
Right.
Every year, the town will authorize the treasurer to borrow money.
Anticipation, it's fine, it's a year, but hopefully we won't need to.
And another.
Must be thirty per year.
And I, I only keep that in there until we're done, because Jeremiah every year used to say, this is stupid, you need to take that out, and so I finally put a thing in there, because I got tired of, like, why is that in there?
So we are, so we are putting it in there.
Right, so like when Donna looks at this and she says, you can, you can take that out, like, you know, so it's like, no, I can't, because it's in the bylaws that it has to be included.
Yeah.
No, I can't.
Yeah.
What, uh, should we consider changing the bylaws so that that doesn't have to be included, like, why is it in the bylaws?
Yeah, it's an administrative committee committee, right.
Yeah, like, that's maybe a good one.
Um, but yeah, we should look at the bylaws too, I mean.
He did send me a draft, it was very busy.
There's a lot going on.
It's a lot, yes, um, I can send it.
That's not happening this year, right?
Hmm, I don't think.
And then the school's not happening this year, well, not at any, um, and then the elections.
Right.
Okay, so I just need to add all the jaws.
But not jaws of life, right?
Right, I'm gonna call it hydraulic, hydraulic rescue tool.
Hydraulic extrication, I don't know, did Sean give you?
I wrote it down, he said.
She just. Hydraulic rescue tool.
But, ask Sean, whether it's electric, is it hydra- hydraulic?
He said battery powered, didn't he?
Yes. No, it's definitely, the reason is, there are hydra- hydraulic ones, he wants to switch to electric, so I don't think there's any hydraulics involved.
He did say hydraulic when he said how it should be praised.
Yeah. He did, but maybe he wasn't thinking.
He did. But maybe you should double check with him how it actually needs to be praised.
Uh, right, he could have just used his.
Well, that may be.
Jaws of life, but this is not.
There could be electrics, electronics, power and hydraulics, but I get the sense it's just electronics, um.
Okay. Um, so, that looks good to me with the, I mean.
Planning board.
With the various, yeah, with the various uh amendments.
Yes.
That we made concerning both amounts and content tonight.
Yes. And board of selectmen, and.
That's you.
I know, this is the first time we're really seeing departments, lots of, this is the first time we're seeing the consolidated department bylaws, so of course, if anything comes up uh this week or next, after we've had time to review it, and the noise by law too, before we sign it.
Were there, did you make any changes between last week and this week?
Between the noise by law?
Yeah.
If I would have it, only if, let me print it. Did we make changes last week? I can go and look at the copies and, and compare, I don't think I would have, unless there was something that Brian brought up, which I don't think I would have.
Right. Uh, uh, you know what, though, I'll, don't, can I, my own, I'll look at it and if there's anything, I'll just send something to Melissa or Melissa, like, are we allowed?
Yeah, just, we'll send to Melissa, cause she has the work draft.
Okay, right. Okay. I, I suspect it'll be fun, so.
And even if it's something we didn't.
Catch.
Yeah.
Right.
Do you know what the actual name is of that nozzle, or I know he.
He called it, well, he said he wants a new, I think the one he said he has is a modern nozzle.
Oh, so. Oh, so monitors are brand.
I don't know. Um, I would, I would just ask him.
I mean, for now, it doesn't matter for that, I guess, I guess it can say battery powered hydraulic rescue tool, if that floats your boat.
Yeah.
You probably didn't need for me to read that part out.
Or your.
Well, that.
Okay, with the Kleenex.
Well, now I'm curious, um, okay, um. Other than that, I'm fine for you to send it to the, to town council with those changes and then we'll meet.
Apparently.
What's happening? There's, I mean, there's, yeah, there's probably hydraulics in the.
Yeah.
It's, I guess it's not a gas powered hydro, yeah.
Yeah, they figured out a way to do it with a battery, yay, okay.
With a battery, yay.
Um, other than that, I'm, I'm good with the work, should be sent to town council.
All right.
And then, obviously, the, if anything comes up, well, actually, I did think we should have the liquor tax district, no.
Oh, your sense of humor.
So.
Okay, where are we then? So I'm gonna print it for you now, I think, um.
Okay.
The only thing I'm. It's the vehicle, oh.
For the.
Purchase, okay, purchase an outfit.
I don't know if like sports utility vehicle, if that's a technical term for an SUV. That's what SUV stands for, right?
Right, sport utility vehicle. I think that as, everybody knows what SUV means and.
Yeah.
I don't think Jeff has worded it out.
If I call it a sport utility rescue vehicle, just so that they don't just think that they're getting them.
Sure.
Yeah, let's go, Mike.
Well, we could just call it an SUV, it's probably actually more understandable to the average person who might go, what is a sports utility vehicle?
Yeah.
So we'll just call it an SUV.
Or, you know, medical SUV.
And to, um, retro, is it, what do you think it'd be, retrofit or?
I would ask Sean, but I mean, for now, we could just say.
I'm just gonna put retrofit, the.
Brush truck.
Med nine, or ref- we're retrofitting med nine, right?
Cabin chassis and putting the brush truck.
Cabin.
Bed on it.
Chassis with the existing.
This way or is it going this way? Uh, the brush is going on top of.
The brush is going on the.
What were you calling, no, the brush truck vehicle modification.
That's, yeah.
And to.
Yeah, don't, don't get too detailed.
Modify. And to modify the existing med nine brush truck, right, cause I wanna make sure everything's included.
Right.
To transfer the brush fire body onto the medical vehicle, onto the existing medical vehicle.
No, that, that could be a lot of detail that people aren't.
Yikes.
I know, I, I think, I was trying to go for less detail.
Much, but.
Go back to what you said.
And somebody will ask for the floor and Sean can get up and talk.
To modify the current med nine brush trucks.
I have a better idea, if it's in the firehouse, just park the two.
It's just being.
And say, we're gonna do this. Okay, everybody, tell me if we're lifting or boosting, uh, moving along, sorry.
Um.
Getting a little punchy, uh.
Are you gonna want a copy too, Ricky?
Pardon?
Is that, are you gonna want a copy too?
Yes.
While I'm printing them?
Yeah.
All right.
Very.
I don't, I'm.
I said I'll send tomorrow doing that.
Right now, I feel like there's gonna be something that I've forgotten, but.
I know.
Well, we.
Before I send it to her, I'm gonna, I'm gonna look again tomorrow.
Yeah, I'm, like, I'm feeling, don't, don't, don't print it out for us.
Well, I want you to go to.
Okay, no, print it, I like, at first I didn't wanna print a copy, but now that, I don't.
You wanna?
Well, and I want you to, like, move, tell me how you want me to move them around to.
Okay. Yeah, okay, then, maybe what we can do is on one of, um, I'm, I'm okay with her sending me an e-copy and using the printed copy.
Uh-huh.
To make arrows of where we want things moved, so she has a copy that's really clear for editing. I remember the old days when we used to edit by actually cutting and pasting.
Yes, I think, yes, we did.
Putting arrows and marks all over everything, it was a nightmare, I love years for that.
If you, if you pasted things and put them in the copy of this way, you could see it, but if you put it in the copy of that way, you didn't see the lines.
You know what happens?
What?
With New Marlborough's higher sticker price, fewer people use the transfer station.
Really?
Look, it says four hundred and thirty-five households.
Oh, this, but that's from back whatever, I don't know, um.
But I think.
It says, it's twenty twenty-one, that was the most recent year.
But I, but I mean comparing to Marlborough, Monterey.
The sticker prices now and the tonnages are all from, from.
No, I'm just saying, not comparing, and this is rough, but not comparing year over year, but comparing two towns, Monterey and Marlborough. Pretty certain Marlborough has more full-time residents than Monterey. I mean, I don't think it's really up for debate.
Right.
And there's few, less tonnage, fewer households using it, because I think more people turn to private service.
Which is interesting, because I can tell you right now that it costs about twelve, like, it might be higher now, but as of about six months ago. Using this cell, it costs about twelve hundred a year.
Oh, I'm sure.
So, two hundred and twenty-five is, is like.
No, I don't think this is. It rea- no, but, but I, I, I wouldn't be surprised if that's happening.
I, I guess, but I, you know, if it was a choice between two twenty-five and twelve hundred?
No, but I, I, I do think it makes people turn to the private, private services.
Yeah, how much do they say for the? It's about, there, Marlborough's charges two twenty-five for their sticker according to Murray, um, yesterday, and it's twelve hundred dollars to get private on. So would you go from two twenty-five to twelve hundred because you felt two twenty-five was too much?
No, what happens is, the stuff goes in the dump, it puts, stuff goes out of my road and dumped out to the side of the road, that's what happens.
Um, but, well, if you think that's a lot, just wait a few years. Because it's going to be really bad, actually, I'm telling you, they're, they're closing a bunch of the landfills. Um, a bunch of the states are closing their landfills to outside, anything from outside states.
Outside, yeah.
I mean, there's a huge amount of consolidation going on in that whole area, obviously, we've shifted over to this, so.
Can you answer my question? What, what, what are they raising the rate up to?
Where, where we, yeah, yeah, it's a subject for discussion.
We're gonna be there so quickly, we're just gonna stay on order, though.
Okay.
Um.
So you use one of the copies to.
That's where I drew the line, the bottom of those.
Okay, should we do this right now?
Yeah.
No, that's, that's, we do have to do.
Draw an arrow where you want that one article coming out.
Well, we want things, not just.
I think you want that down there, cause that gets you everything you're paying for, and then these two miscellaneous money items at the end. And I think that's the one thing I know of.
It was just, it was in the two money items, this one and this one, so they're next to each other, so maybe just either move that one off or down. So that these two are next to each other since they're kind of a competition, they're going to the same place, so.
Two transfers, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think you want the mil foil first, if that makes sense.
Foil up, okay.
Um, other, I mean, other than that, I'm fine to send it to council like this and continue to review it. Uh, um.
Yeah.
I, I am, yeah.
I agree.
And if we notice little things, or Sean wants to word things a little bit differently, we don't need to bring it to council for.
Right, yeah, I think we can just prove that before we go through the print.
Um, the tree contract with John Field, we've done two years, we're wanting to extend for three years, is that true?
This is the last year, yes.
Oh, and this is with John Field?
Yeah, so I'll just send him a letter if you guys approve, I, I would say we should do it.
Okay, I would move to extend the tree contract with John Field for the final year.
Oh, the second?
Is there any other discussion on that? Okay, we'll call a vote.
Yes.
And yes, so that motion carries and Melissa will write to extend the contract, they still need to agree to extend it, they can.
Did we hear anything from this cell that they have planned, so she just, she wrote back to me, first she said, okay, but our rates have gone up, we'll get those to you, and then she wrote back and said, oh, I didn't read that you sent the attachment that has, you know, the. Agreement for the two-year present, I have to check with my department manager, she said, so, hopefully I'll hear in the next few days.
So we'll know whether they agreed to the.
Extension.
Extension.
And if they don't, then I guess we're gonna have to jump on real quick to get what their prices are and see like what, how much they're charging will be. Yeah, right. Um, okay.
The tractor bid, we already accepted, um, an authorization letter for the small communities grant program.
Do we need to sign it?
We do.
And I got a quote from BRPC of how much it would be to do the. Space renovation, fifteen thousand dollars, so, I probably forgot, I should've wrote that out, I just think they wanted to add the twenty percent into the budget.
So, wait, but that would be if we get the grant, that.
Right, but I, from my conversation with her, I think it's pretty.
So we would need to come up with, what do you want, free grant?
And it sounds like the RBC could do it in eight to ten months, so.
And we'll hear back from the, it's on a one basis?
Yeah.
So we could hear back soon.
As soon as I get her this, I mean, it sounded like I might hear pretty quickly.
Well, I like the idea of putting aside that three thousand dollars.
I'm gonna second that, yeah, just do it.
Um.
Does that happen, where can you do, do we do it in this, another special article?
Yeah, from free cash, I think.
Eight thousand, free cash.
Yes.
And then we can just tell the finance committee to change that, if there, we'll see how they react.
The, the possibility of being able to get quite a bit of money for doing various open space things from that, it's a big.
And having a good long-term plan.
Yeah, exactly.
Um, the tandem actually being there, do we need to go over anything with?
Was she, Sarah explained this, I think.
If that, that's a mess, I mean, it was confusing, it took me a while, I mean, so I noticed it, yeah, it's messy, but I think we know kind of what happened now.
And hopefully it will improve in the future and we'll get it all sorted out and use the money the way we meant to use it, yay.
Um, Gareth, as a traffic control officer, so is this an indefinite appointment?
I agree, it'll allow them to do details.
Okay, uh, I would move to appoint Gareth back as, as traffic control officer. Through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
On second?
Any other discussion on that, we'll call a vote?
Yes.
And yes, so Gareth, thank you, will be a traffic draw officer through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Um, transfer station sticker, transfer station committee sticker fee recommendation.
So the transfer station committee recommended that we set the sticker price at ninety for FY twenty-four.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
With it up from seventy-five.
Five, yep, and, I mean, I know that you don't always raise fees just in anticipation of increased costs. But I am legitimately, and I think the committee as a whole are legitimately concerned about, um, what's gonna happen over the horizon. Between now and twenty twenty-seven, cause twenty twenty-six, between now and twenty twenty-six, a lot of things are happening. Um, not in our town, but on the bigger scale.
Yeah.
Um, that include a lot of closures, the incinerators are already closed, um, a lot of closures of landfills in our state and in other states. And in other states to outside garbage, there's massive consolidation statewide and probably nationally, but I haven't been following the national scene. In terms of haulers, um, Pacella is doing that in our region, but there's two other haulers that have done it in other segments of the state. Um, they've become more, I'll call it vertically integrated, but they, they're buying landfills, they're not only running, they're running trucks. They're running, um, sidings where they're taking the truck to garbage to take, to their own landfills.
Mm-hmm.
They're sometimes locking out other people from using their siding, so like. Roger, I believe, is now having to go somewhere in New York State to haul their garbage, whereas they used to be able to go for the Springfield. Um, there's a lot of changes, but the likelihood is very high that we're gonna see extreme increases. In, um, disposal costs for municipal solid waste between now and twenty twenty-six, and certainly by twenty twenty-six. Um, and we're trying to figure out various ways to encourage people to begin changing, I mean, there's only so much we can do. We can ask people to begin changing both their buying habits and their disposal habits.
Mm-hmm.
We can't change the way people package materials, right, cause the consumer can't change that, they can, you know, if you buy batteries, they're still coming in that plastic stuff.
Yeah.
Um, but those are the concerns we have, and we just feel like, like this modest increase this year. Would, I, what I don't wanna see is that we end up having to ask for two hundred dollar increase in sticker price in one year.
Yeah. No, I'm not, I'm not opposed to it.
Yeah.
My only question would be for second and additional stickers in the same household.
Okay.
Do we, what are we doing now?
Fifteen, please.
Fifteen for every.
Fifteen for second, oh no, they get two for the ninety.
Oh, gotcha.
And then anything additional is fifteen, if you are renting your house and don't have license plates, then it's twenty dollars for each one, that's a key thing.
Right, I, I think that's the same thing.
Okay.
Um, and the only other thing I'm gonna point out in the notes, just so it's clear, is, um, I, I personally have been advocating to consider transitioning to a pay-as-you-screw system. And I wanna point to that, we don't have numbers, neither Greg Barrington nor Sandersfield or Stockbridge actually put their numbers into the state system, but note the Beckett numbers.
Yes, very low.
Very low, it's, it's ha- like, you know, Ken was so happy with our number, but Beckett, per household, has thrown out half of our, our poundage. Um, and that's because they went to the P O L system. Um, where people are being asked to pay for each bag they throw out, and strangely enough, when you're paying for that. You find a way to remove your compost, which is like thirty to forty percent of municipal solid waste, which you don't pay for.
Which. Yeah, but then things like mattresses and other things are gonna go on the side of the road.
But we already take mattresses, you already can't throw out mattresses, it.
I, I just use mattresses as a number of things, but I mean, I, because I had to pick up crib and a bunch of baby things, side of the road.
That's true, but we're already accepting, we, one of the things you do is you accept a lot of the things that would've been municipal solid waste outside municipal solid waste. And we're already half statewide, like, you're not allowed to put mattresses in solid waste, especially more fabrics and, and other things are already being, you, you take those out of it, so you don't have to pay for them.
Right.
Right? The one thing we're not doing, and it's coming down the road, we're already asking institutions and restaurants and, uh, other producers of large quantities of food waste. Are already being required to move towards composting, eventually, they're gonna tick that down, because it's forty percent of household waste. You wanna reduce your municipal solid waste, you get people to start composting, and we have compost bins.
Yeah, you have it, right, I've, I've seen people.
Yeah, we have it, and I, I already did it myself, but we're giving, we're giving that option, so I think ultimately, we don't have a choice, maybe. We won't be able to afford to throw it all out, otherwise, right, so, yeah, people need to do the right thing and change, start changing their buying habits and their habits, because there's, there's no place left to throw it out. Throw it and take it, everything has to go somewhere.
I would, I would motion to set the transfer station sticker fee for fiscal year twenty-four at ninety dollars for two in the household and fifteen dollars for additional in the same household.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Call a vote?
Yes.
And yes, that carries, that's sticker fee.
Sorry, I went a longer than I needed to.
Well, interesting to learn about what the upcoming challenge is.
Ken did resign, so we all, we could see if we, the committee does think we should continue to exist.
I have to give you this, and would you please see that he does this, if he leaves, he might've left a wheelchair outside, so.
Okay.
Oh, no problem.
Don't forget it.
Okay.
And I saw, I went back, but I would forget it.
He will not forget it.
Um.
Good night.
Anyway, so I, I don't have a suggestion for someone at this moment, but it would be good to find a, um, another person, I'm gonna try and.
Thank you, Melissa.
Couple of people.
I'd love to do tomorrow.
But if you have someone you think would, is interested in issues concerning solid waste that might be able to participate in and might have some skills to offer, that would be great.
Right now, you and I, Lee?
Yes.
Okay. Um, is there any unanticipated business? No.
Yay, um.
Minutes?
Minutes, there's no comments, questions from the public, because there's no public left.
I only have two minutes, I think I'm still waiting on one.
Yeah, I'm not ready for the most recent.
Wait, wait, wait. Okay, okay, that's great.
So, why don't we start with February twenty-first and get that?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I don't know what happened there.
I don't know.
Think it's clean though.
Yeah.
Is my comment system working for you? This week, we're trying it out, so, yeah, okay.
Oh, yeah, 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 I haven't been good about trying it out either, I'm sorry. I, every time I think we make a small edit, it ends up being a big one.
I know, it's hard to. Uh, so my only question so far is the top of page three, we, we were both working at the same, it's the usual thing, so it says now it reads the other two portable radios. Does it, should it say that?
Yeah, it should, it's weird how that works, the two, well, I guess other.
Other radios or the two portable, either one or the other, I think.
No, it's three radios.
Well, it's back because we put the car back.
Well, I know.
But this still has to reflect what happened then.
So, let's just do the two portable radios.
Okay. Alright. How, how does this sound after reading? So it might make sense to go up six thousand this year, sum to forty-nine thousand?
This year, sorry, delete sum.
Just two, delete sum.
Two forty-nine thousand. No, I just mean, we, we've been doing two and we're, we're, if we do under three, we'd be good, but, so how do you gotta do it?
Uh, yeah. Yeah.
Well, you don't have to, but.
What, sometimes you gotta do what?
Have a meeting where you figure things out.
Oh, yeah, well. Yeah, and then those are just my things, and I prefer that.
So it's just these two changes.
Yep.
So motion to approve the February twenty-first, twenty-three minutes as amended.
I'll second.
Okay, we'll vote.
Yes.
And yes.
And just for clarity, these comments go in, the things that they mark, like the way that works is I'm replacing that with.
Right, that's what I've been doing.
I think, yeah, no, I just wanted to make sure that was what was happening, so. Alright. You want it up here or go to the. Do, okay, next one, three fifty. So I did rewrite large portions of this.
Mm-hmm. Motion approved March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three as amended.
Second.
Okay, call vote?
Yes.
And yes, so those are approved. Uh, you can give that a reading. Okay, um. We're not gonna, we'll do three twenty-two next week, I don't get to them.
That's fine.
Um, we will meet next Tuesday at one. Um. With the finance committee, we will discuss the budget based on the changes that were made tonight. And we'll probably also just take a look at the work, I mean, we'll probably warn on there whether or not we've heard back.
Yeah, and if this, and if the finance committee's gonna be here, maybe they can say, you know, whatever they support, so I can add all that in there.
Yeah. Um, yeah, they can do that, if Scott's here, we may wait, we may do that as well.
Oh, right, when does he get back? I think he'll be here.
So, yeah, pretty sure.
But we, what?
Does he get email warnings?
Um, I don't.
Does he get email when he's here?
Do we want to text him? Well, he doesn't really respond to my texts either, so.
Well, he's in Jamaica, so.
Oh, yeah, he may not even have his phone yet, but, um.
Yeah, we'll figure it back when he's in it.
I will try to remember to call him on Monday and tell him that we moved the date and time of the meeting.
Uh, yeah, to.
To one o'clock.
To Tuesday at one, I mean, yeah, I thi- I think that's good though, given we'll post on Friday. For the most part, all we're probably gonna be doing is reviewing the budget again with the finance committee and, and discussing support for each article. Going back over the warrant, depending if Donna has given us.
Any changes.
Any changes or not, but I mean, it, it, it never hurts, I think. You'll, you'll always catch something as soon as, as soon as it, as soon as you print it, so, um.
Print it.
And maybe not much else, but it would, but we should be with them, because, I mean, we made a lot of decisions lately, but just to. Is everyone comfortable after we had a little bit of time, I think it was good we made decisions, but is everyone just comfortable with, is that we've had time to digest it?
Yeah.
Um.
I, I think we did a lot of work tonight, you know, I'm not saying everything we decide is right, but you gotta get.
Yes, or not, there's definitely not the case.
No matter what you choose, that's the case.
Motion to adjourn.
This second.
Vote.
Do you, yes.
And yes, immediately adjourned at seven fifty-eight, yeah.
Do you anticipate? Do you anticipate anything else on the?